Ah, that makes sense.
Good evening and welcome to the May seventh Litchfield School Board meeting. I would like to call the meeting to order. It is five thirty-five and start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much.
Have this cord be the one that's up there?
We are having a few little technical difficulties. We're working on getting Mr. Cutter remotely in and once we have him, we will then do a motion for remote participation. Mr. Plansky will not be attending the meeting tonight. So are there any review and revision to the agenda?
Nope.
Anybody? Nope. Anything that board members or superintendent want to move off of consent agenda into old business? Hearing none. I'm gonna go ahead and move into a summary of non-public actions from April sixteenth, twenty twenty-five. Ms. Ames' motion to approve the April second, twenty twenty-five, non-public meeting minutes. Mr. Shoemaker seconded the motion and the motion passed three zero zero. Ms. Ames' motion to approve the nominations as presented. Mr. Shoemaker seconded the motion and the motion passed three zero zero. Those nominations were Susan Doyle for LMS Special Education Teacher, Madalena de Gregorio Aabin, GMS School Psychologist, and, oh man, Dominique Guadaria?
Sure.
Am I? I'm sorry if I butchered those names.
We're gonna go with Ms. G?
Yeah. LMS and CH School Psychologists. Ms. Ames' motion to accept the resignation of Allison Dean, GMS Speech Language Pathologist. Mr. Shoemaker seconded the motion and the motion passed three zero zero. Ms. Ames moved to adjourn the non-public session at eight eleven. Mr. Shoemaker seconded the motion, which passed three zero zero. For tonight, we have two presentations and recognitions. Do you have a preference on order?
Yes, I'd like to do the first one first because it's a recognition. So I'll call our Food Service Director Lauren Crowley up real quick.
Yes, yes.
Actually, just before we get to Lauren, can you take the vote to allow Andrew?
Is he here?
He's on my screen. We're working on getting the cord.
I'll make a motion to approve remote participation.
I have a motion. I will second the motion. Andrew, are you there? Can you hear us? We just need to make sure.
He's by himself.
Why remote and if he's by himself?
He was talking to me before. I heard him before.
Stand by.
I see his thing going like that he's talking. There he is. Now I see him. Wait, let me try this. All right, can you talk now?
What is going on?
Is your volume on?
Yeah, my volume's all the way up. But I heard him before.
So why don't we stand by and then we will table the motion?
Yeah.
And bring it back when he's able to answer the questions.
The computer was kicking around.
Yeah. Thank you.
Maybe it's my computer for some reason. Sarah, are you on the invite?
Yep.
Can you try and open your Google Meet and see if it's any better? I mean, I heard Andrew before. We were back there.
Technology isn't our friend tonight.
Yeah, we can read your lips.
I take that back.
Wait, that's good.
I'm not on the link, the Google link.
Oh, there's Andrew.
There we go. Look at that.
There he is.
Now that we have sound.
Can you hear me?
Yeah!
Thank you.
Andrew, can you hear me?
I sure can.
All right, perfect. Can you let us know why you're remote and if anyone is with you?
Yes, thank you. There is no one with me. I'm traveling for business this week. My apologies to the board for not being there in person tonight.
Thank you. So we have a motion that is still on the table and we have a second for me on the table. All those in favor of allowing remote participation, we will need to do a roll call vote. Matt?
Aye.
Heidi?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
All right. So Andrew, you are rocking and rolling with us tonight remotely. Turning it back to the superintendent.
All right. So want to do a presentation or recognition this evening. So we learned over school vacation week, so last week, and we can announce this officially. We actually learned a little bit earlier than that.
We fixed it, I think.
I think we might be good, John. That our own Ms. Lauren Crowley was named by the School Nutrition Association, the Northeast Regional Director of the Year.
Woo! There's a crown. You need a crown sometimes.
I know, I left them in my office. The crown and the scepter in my office.
Don't worry, she's got a crown.
Yeah.
Absolutely. That's amazing.
Good, good.
And just to kind of summarize what the award does, the award recognizes the extraordinary contributions of school nutrition directors such as Lauren, who manage effective school meal programs and providing healthy and appetizing meals to our students. So this is a really exciting honor. I sent a press release out earlier today to the community so people can read the full press release of this honor. Lauren was one of six, correct?
Yep.
Regional Directors who was recognized at a conference a few weeks ago, right?
We were, I was one of six up for the National Director of the Year Award. So there's, there's seven regions that, so the state director fed into the regionals and then of the seven regions, one of each, there's three levels, one employee, one manager, and one director gets the national title. Fortunately, did not get the national title, but that's okay.
Not this year.
Not this year.
There's always next year.
Yes, I was enraged, but Northeast Regional was not even, I actually kind of, after the state thing, I kind of forgot about it. And then when I got the call, actually, I got the call on April Fool's Day and I was going, what if this is just an elaborate prank? Like, oh no. It was, it, it, it's insane, but it's really great. It's a great honor and I am the first person from New Hampshire to ever get a Northeast Regional in any of the capacities. So.
Nice.
Just made some history. It's fine. But genuinely, I, I know I joke and I pretend that I have this like huge ego and blah, 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 but I'm very proud of what this has been. It's a huge honor. So really psyched, so.
So deserving.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're really proud of Lauren. We're proud of the whole team. A little shout out, we're doing School Lunch Hero this week.
Yes. So yeah, National School Lunch Hero Day was, it's the first Friday in May every single year. We were on school break. So, I mean, arguably, we got the best one because we didn't have to do anything on School Lunch Hero Day, which is great, but we are gonna do a little belated celebration on this Friday. So yeah, it, it's exciting. So the girls, they really, that's their time to shine. So they really get, the elementary school goes nuts. I love it because they make them cards and all this other stuff. So each school does a little something for them and I have little gifts for them too. So if you see a school lunch person on Friday, thank them because they, we all know how hard they work.
Absolutely.
Congratulations to you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for all you do for us, truly.
I appreciate it.
I mean, it's a lot of work and you have a great team. So everyone.
I do have a great team.
Say thank you on Friday and every day.
And every day, but Friday especially.
A little extra.
Yes.
Awesome.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
I expect pictures of you with your crown and your scepter.
Yeah, why haven't we seen it?
Oh, yeah. Yeah. I don't know. It's on Facebook.
Can I borrow it?
You can borrow it, yeah. The scepter is very.
It's beautiful. It's, the sound is gorgeous.
It's very, very nice.
Is it like Elsa from Frozen? Like, is it a full out?
It has like a red thing on it because it looks like an apple.
It looks like an apple.
I was just saying, there's not like a chicken patty on the top of it.
No. Well, I wasn't involved, but Renee was trying to find one with an apple and the crown matches it. There's a cape involved. It's.
Wow.
Yeah, there's like a whole thing, so.
Nacho average.
Nacho average Food Service Director. She got me a T-shirt and like.
We're looking forward to your official portrait.
Yes, yes, very much so. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I will call up Principal Jake Hess to the friends and he has some friends with him.
Yeah, you guys can grab a seat or potato. You're gonna do all the talking. So. So I have with me tonight, three wonderful seniors who are super excited that we're twenty-some days away from graduation. But next week is Senior Project Presentation Night. So we brought three seniors tonight to talk a little bit about senior projects in general, kind of the process they went through this year to get their projects done, kind of what led them to choosing their topic, and then a quick little preview about what you can expect to see from them next Thursday. So I'm just gonna turn over the table to them and let them, whatever order you guys want to go, talk a little bit about your projects.
Start on this side. My name is Logan Alair. So for the senior project, I kind of started off with what I like to do in my free time and stuff. I love pretty much anything with engines in general. So during that time, I was working at Irwin Rain and I was thinking what's the best way to learn more about engines is do something myself with engines. So I wanted to, I purchased a jet ski. It was an older two-stroke jet ski and it was obviously wrecked. It was a restoration project that I did. Blown motor and I used my mentor, who's my boss, obviously, to help me with that and it just, you know, helped me learn so much about it because, I don't know, taking a class or anything doesn't really help as much as, you know, getting hands-on and that's kind of what I'm all about. And it was really good. So for, what, next week for the presentation, you know, I'm just gonna explain everything, get all the pictures, get all that. I don't have it with me. It's up north, but I have all the pictures.
I was gonna say, we need a kitty.
Yeah, no, uh, yeah. So, little bit about it. It was blown. Guy beach did a bunch. So I got all those pictures. I boarded out, got a point five millimeter over on the first piston. All the rings are all set. Everything's all good and runs great. Yeah, pretty much that's the main of it. My mentor helped me tremendously because that's what he does full-time. So yeah, that's pretty much what to expect.
Awesome.
So I'm Nicholas Mackey. I don't know what I really wanted to do after high school. I'm pretty academically smart. I don't want to flex that, but I usually just, I've had As all my life and I have no motivation for after high school. And my brother, who graduated here, and I believe twenty sixteen, saw my potential and wanted me to go shadow behind a mechanical engineer at a startup firm that my brother created. It's called Adaptive Industries. They really focus on like creating medical equipment that's not really been done before. So they get tasked with problems that have just never been done. And I kind of liked that, you know, having no direction of where to go. You come up with your own ideas and stuff. While I was there, they are coming up with a product that's never been creative or been created before focusing on distributing like medicine to third-world countries that don't have access to. I don't know for copyright purposes. I don't want to say much else. But it's gonna be a real global changing thing if they can figure it out. But then they've been working on it forever. I was allowed to do some of it, some like the scanning, finding the diameters and stuff. And doing this senior project has really shown me that I think I like building and being a mechanical engineer and a little bit of 3D engineer, doing the CAD work and stuff. And I think after this, I'm gonna have a good future going to that. I'm now considering colleges. I know it's a bit late, but I'm gonna do like the community route, try to save some money there. And this senior project stuff really gave me a good look out on my career and future.
My name is Kaylin McKinnon. For my senior project, I did a marine science fellowship over at the Seacoast Science Center in Rye. I've known for a really long time now that I love marine science. It's been like a huge passion of mine since fifth grade at this point. And so I just did some research originally on where to get like job shadows in the area. I reached out to a couple places, including the Seacoast Science Center, and the job chart itself didn't work out. But I also found the fellowship, which I ended up doing. It's, it was a ten-week program over, not ten sequential, but over every Saturday, I would go over there usually ten to one, ten AM to one PM, and we would have like a class and then, and then we would do something hands-on relating to what we learned. So one of the days, they had like a big BioBlitz event. So we got to like count all as many different species there on a state park, in that state park as we could. I got to help with the seine netting. We grabbed a big net and like dragged up as many things from like the intertidal floor as we could and just kind of parse them all out. And then some other things we did, we learned about ocean chemistry and took samples from their aquariums and added different chemicals to see how that affected the pH. We did marine mammals. They have a marine mammal rescue team at the Seacoast Science Center and they have, they respond to mammals along the New Hampshire coast, Northern Massachusetts, and I got to use one of those measuring, the measuring sheets that they do to measure deceased seals. And then we also with that had an overarching project over the whole thing that we had to complete. I chose to do a research project on seal mortality in the shores of New Hampshire, Northern Massachusetts, using data provided to me by the marine mammal rescue team. And it was really interesting because using their ages, their sex, and their cause of deaths, I got to determine, I got a conclusive answer on how those demographics relate to seal mortality and what the most common causes of death were.
Were they?
Awesome.
Well, most common cause of death is predation, which is to be expected.
Yeah.
But the most vulnerable age groups is, they call it weanling. It's like they're old enough to not be reliant on their mothers anymore, but they're kind of just being on their own. So they're still relatively small, still kind of learning the basics of fending for themselves and living. So that does make them more vulnerable to predators. But also in terms of sex, when they're really young, both males and females have pretty much equal mortality rates. But then once they reach adulthood, female mortality decreases while males increases. And that's because males have a larger, they're larger than females. So while they might be stronger or able to fend off predators more, they're also at sea for longer and more easily spotted. And I also learned that while seals are, they call hauled out or like on land, one of their top predators is coyotes, which I didn't really think about because, you know, you usually think of them in the ocean. But it was a really great opportunity. I actually went back there a couple weeks ago to volunteer for a trail run benefiting the marine mammal rescue team. And it's just really nice to learn so much more about what I'm passionate about and also make connections that will help me going forward, especially because I'm going to UNH, which is only like thirty minutes away. It'll be really nice to have them as a connection.
Are you gonna be doing something with marine science?
Yes, I'm majoring in marine estuarine and freshwater biology.
Very cool.
Nice. Awesome.
I think the, the really cool thing about the senior project, obviously it focuses on like a passion project, you know, some of the kids do. And whether they know it or not, it really does embed those work-study practices throughout the process, the perseverance, their critical thinking, that sort of thing. I think as we move forward, we're gonna continue to kind of adapt and really push the senior project to be more intentional with that, hopefully tie the digital portfolios to that as well. But the kids learn so much from doing something that they're passionate about, they're interested in. If they can't find, they get that real-world transferable skills that we talk about all the time. So they're getting all of that stuff. They just don't always recognize that, that they're getting it. So it's, it's really great. I remember, you know, three years ago, the first day I spent at Litchfield was on senior project presentation day. And just the variety, you know, a girl became a pilot because she, I was like, why'd you become a pilot? She's like, I watched Top Gun as a kid with my parents and loved it. So, so just the range of, you know, building engines, mechanical engineering, the marine biology, just the range of things the kids are interested in and partake in. It's pretty cool to see. So next Thursday, from six to eight at the high school, you'll get to walk through in a presentation style. Everyone's kind of lined up in the cafeteria, the halls, the library, and just hear from, you know, our Campbell graduate, or almost Campbell graduates that are getting ready to go off, talk about what they're passionate about, what they learned, and really kind of representing four years or twelve years of a great Litchfield education kind of culminating in that. So it's a pretty cool event. These guys are fantastic. So I think they'll even answer some more questions from you guys too, if that works.
Questions?
Yeah. So the jet ski, is this gonna be something that you're ripping around on this summer?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely.
Yeah, that one's great. Cool. And with the mechanical engineering, so you, like, having experienced that, you feel like it's, it was enough to like really make you actually wanna, you, you didn't want to do something after high school and now you? Yeah, now it's pushed me to, you know, want to build something for myself that I could call the, my idea, basically. And is that something that you can, you said it's your brother's company? Startup, yeah. He more so does like the finance, financial situation. So is that something that you can continue to be involved with while you're studying? Go day-to-day. Hopefully I could maybe get my foot in the door there because they look like they have a bright future right now. And if I can get in there early, good things coming my way.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the hardest things with college is like, a lot of times you're learning book stuff, but you're not really applying it. And it sounds like all three of you have experienced things that you got to apply it with and that's amazing. So I, I think it's cool. I mean, we talked about, you know, transferable skills, but I think one of the more, one of the more impressive things to me is helping them actually parse out, am I interested in this? Do I want to do this? Because so many times people jump into something, law school. And then they're like, why? That's awesome.
No, I think it's great and I have the benefit of knowing a couple of you and knowing you guys have different paths, which I think is fantastic. You know, what's gonna happen, you know, going forward? You mentioned UNH, you mentioned community school. I think you're going into the trades. Is that right? So I mean, I think there's some really great, awesome diversity from you guys and it shows that great things come out of Campbell. So congratulations.
From this to, you know, Logan's our four-time state championship and resting. Logan actually finished school in January. He's, he's been done for the second semester. He took care of everything he needed to do. So he's had this second semester to, to work and do all that kind of stuff. So just to show the different paths that people could take and the opportunities that you do a lot of Campbell for those individual pathways, I think is pretty impressive out of what we do.
Yeah. Awesome. Any other questions?
No, I honestly, I think it's great. If you're ever looking out for a job, look at BAE. We got mechanical engineering jobs all the way through from research and development into program status, all the way through. My background's physics, so.
It's a hundred dollars for every person who refers to.
Yeah.
It's a lot more than that, but, but it's, I mean, like you, I didn't know what to do, right? I went into college with a generic physics degree. I had no clue where I wanted to apply. I came out of college and said, hey, lasers, that's what I'm doing and going from there. So it's, it's certainly a journey. Everyone has their own path and it, it, either way, any way you get there is great, right? So congratulations, guys, and looking forward to the, your last, was it twenty? Last twenty-four days, something like that before gradu- graduation. So if I don't see you guys again, congratulations and best of luck in the future.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
For giving us some of your time tonight, too. It's, you guys busy. Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys. That was wonderful.
Of course.
Thank you for having us.
As they leave, I'll just give a quick shout out. Noah Benoy and Michelle Lincoln are the senior project advisors. The two of them meets with every single senior as they present their project. They do the paperwork. They make sure everything's aligned. So their caseload of ninety-seven seniors right now as they organize all the stuff throughout the year. They're wonderful in it. So Noah and Michelle, great job. So thanks, guys, for coming tonight. Appreciate it.
Of course. Thank you guys for having us.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you. Awesome. I love when we have students come. Okay. Community comment on agenda items. Is there anyone, I'm not seeing anyone, but I'm offering it up. Is there anyone here from the community that would like to make a public comment?
You skipped Danny's report.
Oh, I did. I'm sorry. I checked you out.
Were you hoping that we weren't gonna catch that?
I was doing, um.
Danny, I'm sorry. Tell me all about it. What do we got?
All right. So spring force are now in like full swing. Baseball had a game today at Newfound and they're currently four one. Softball also had a game today against Cobran-Norwood and are currently two and four. Boys across had a game today, but it got moved to Friday and are currently two and three. Girls across have a game next Monday against Laconia and are two and two. In track and field, they have a meet on May tenth called the Frosh Meet with Salem and King. Some of the past activities that we had, student council went to the Manchester Food Bank on the nineteenth and we also hosted the first Campbell Showdown Assembly. It went very well. We got a bunch of really good feedback from that. And then we just had spring break. Some of our current events is this Saturday, we have prom. And then also on the fifteenth is the senior project presentation day where all other grades have a half day. And then the showing of Footloose is on May sixteenth, seventeenth, and eighteenth. And then some of our next things at the end of May is Spring Fest the last week. And then we also have the Spring Pop Concert on the twentieth. And pretty much in Campbell right now, we're just in full assessment season with AP exams this week and then either next week or the week after that is the SAS science for the juniors.
May fourteenth.
May fourteenth. And then at the middle school, they also have the NHSAS. And then as well, in at Griffin, they have that. And they also have the iReady diagnostic.
Beautiful.
Awesome.
So efficient.
Any questions for Danny?
Nope.
Great job.
See, I didn't need to skip you. You got it. You got it. Now we will go into community comment on agenda items. Seeing no one here, we will close community comment and we will have another community comment option towards the end of the meeting, either at eight o'clock or at the end of the agenda, whichever happens first. Moving into correspondence, I did do correspondence this week. On April sixteenth, Anne Innamorati emailed the board circulating four payment manifests for bills that could not wait until our next meeting that was in three weeks tonight. On April seventeenth, Anthony LaPlante, CHS Student Council member, sent an email to the board updating us regarding their efforts to raise money for ham donations for the food pantry. On April seventeenth, Amy Anderson, a parent, emailed the board and the superintendent with some feedback regarding LMS. And there was a response by the superintendent. On April twenty-second, Jan Sullivan circulated the draft, April sixteenth, public and non-public minutes. On April twenty-second, Anne Innamorati emailed the board circulating two payroll manifests for the four oh three B contributions and the LSSA dues. There were responses from Dan Dewitt and Innamorati, and then Dan also responded again. On April twenty-second, Tina Harrison, who, it's weird to say parent, emailed the board requesting guest appearances by the school board at the Footloose production May sixteenth to the eighteenth. And there were responses from Heidi Ames, Dan Dewitt, and Christina Harrison. On April twenty-second, Dan Mitchell emailed the board circulating the GMS end-of-the-year activities. On April twenty-fourth, Andrew Cutter emailed the board circulating the approved budget committee calendar. On April twenty-fifth, Margaret Kovler, a parent, emailed the board regarding concerns about the AP exam and how it impacts the weighted grade, and then communication about exam signups. And there was a response from the superintendent. On April twenty-fifth, Dan Mitchell emailed the board and SAU staff welcoming everyone to come help duct tape PIM to a chair. On April twenty-ninth, Michaela DeMetter, a community member, sent an email to the board and selectmen requesting signatures for a letter of support regarding fair school funding. On May first, Anne Innamorati circulated two accounts payable manifests, one with checks and one that's ACH. On May fourth, Renee Burgess emailed the board circulating the draft May seventh agenda. On May fifth, the superintendent sent a text message to the board inviting the board to attend the second round of interviews for candidates for the CHS principal position. There were responses from Matt Shoemaker, Heidi Ames, Dan Dewitt, Peter Plansky, and Andrew Cutter, basically everyone. On May fifth, Andrew Cutter sent a text message to the board confirming attendance for the Wednesday meeting to confirm quorum. Mr. Cutter is on work travel and therefore attending remotely. Mr. Plansky is away and Heidi, Dan, and Matt all indicated they would be attending. On May sixth, Anne Innamorati emailed the board circulating the four oh three B manifest. On May seventh, the superintendent circulated a Google Meet link for tonight's meeting. On May seventh, Anne Innamorati emailed the board circulating a small credit card manifest. And on May seventh, text messages were sent to the board or amongst the board regarding the shelter in place and its impact on schools and then eventually the lifting of the shelter in place. And that is our correspondence for the last three weeks. Moving on to general business, we have the superintendent's report.
Yes, so we're just gonna start with enrollment. Really, we do this once a month. It's usually the second meeting, but I do want to draw your attention to kindergarten enrollment. I know it's small up there because we're kind of sharing screens, but the link is right there. So as of right now, you know, May seventh, we have fifty-seven kindergarten students enrolled for next year. That is lower than it's been traditionally. I mean, our birth rates are consistent in the town of what they've been this whole window. They're between sixty-eight and seventy for, you know, the reflective years that would be coming up here, as it has been the previous years. But we're not seeing the kids enrolling in kindergarten right now. So one, I just want to bring that to your attention because we might have to have a larger discussion about that at a future meeting in terms of how we're gonna do.
um, in terms of, of how we're gonna deal with the staffing aspect of that. And two, as kind of a public, kinda out there, like through every avenue, if you have an incoming kindergartner and you have not registered them, please register them. You can just reach out directly to the GMS. They will help you through the entire process. Make sure you're taken care of. Um, and we've been putting this out on a couple of different avenues. I don't think I've said it in this way here at a meeting like this, so I'll do it this way to hopefully catch some. Um, but please, please, if you know someone with a kindergarten or please, or a rising kindergarten, please check with them and ask them, you know, like, hey, have you registered your kid? We need to make sure our numbers are accurate and we wanna make sure kids, um, are registered. We have kindergarten orientation coming up in a couple of weeks. It is.
Next Friday.
Next Friday. Um, so really, if we can get kids registered before that orientation, it's a great way in that transition process as, as kids start kindergarten. And if they're not already in our preschool or are entering school for the first time here as part of the Litchfield School District. So, as, as accurate as those numbers can be and as accurate as those names can be, that's really gonna help that transition into, into school. Um, if we can get kids in for that freshman or, uh, freshman kindergarten orientation. Kindergarten orienta- tation, uh, next week. So, if you know anyone with a rising kindergartner, uh, we are a little concerned that we're, we're just missing people cause like I said, the birth rate numbers are pretty consistent in the town for the reflective years from previous years. Our pre-K number was pretty consistent where it's been in other years when you're just using that as a raw data point. So, it really feels like there are families out there who haven't registered, um, their upcoming kindergartner yet, so.
Just, I wanted to point a reference, so I went back to twenty-three, twenty-four enrollment and saw that as of May twenty-third, we had seventy-three last year.
Yep.
And then the year before that, on April twenty-eighth, we had seventy-three.
Yeah.
And so, we're at fifty-seven. That does seem.
It feels low.
Yeah.
And if you look at the corresponding birth rates, I went back today to just double check to see like what it is and.
Yeah.
Um, cause I find this stuff fascinating. In like the recurring years here, we're at sixty-eight, seventy, sixty-eight, seventy, you know, like, so it's consistent with, that should be translating now into the building here, so.
I mean, are we, I guess, on the WhatsApp page? Are we putting out an announcement of like?
I think we've put it on our social media. I would have to check if that has been put on the WhatsApp page, um, itself. I know that it's been up on the GMS.
Uh, we're asking specifically, but what we do is I have certain, like, through the PTO, um, and then certain moms, so I know it's definitely gone up on the GMS PTO page.
Yep.
Um, we put it out on our, on our general, uh, GMS Facebook and then I also believe that, uh, through our different connections, it made it onto the Litchfield Moms.
Yeah.
Facebook page. We could do, um, a re blast, cause it's been a few weeks since we did the initial.
Yeah, and I'm just, cause I, I guess, on our social media is one thing, right? But that's usually for people who's already integrated with our system, right? So, reaching out to the common community, social media, so whether the Litchfield Moms, I mean, my wife doesn't have Facebook, so she would never get it. So, just the local WhatsApp page or, you know, the town website or something like that.
So, I just wanna give that enrollment. We'll have the full enrollment update, you know, the second meeting of the month.
Thank you.
Yep. Next, principal update. I just wanna give an update, as you kinda mentioned in the correspondence, Heidi, um, we had our second round of interviews yesterday. We had brought in, uh, four candidates, um, for, for the position yesterday. Uh, all four are, are, they're very different candidates, all excellent candidates, um, but would, would, uh, represent just kind of a different background where they're coming from. And, uh, we had a bunch of panels throughout the day. It's a long day for them. It's almost seven hours for them going through it all, tours of the school, meeting with everybody. Really good experience. Um, we're looking to kind of finalize a pick in the next week-ish amount of time here. We're in the process of doing uh, kinda, uh, additional reference checks, gathering information from our different stakeholders, um, who were a part of the process yesterday. Um, talking to people we know across the state, um, who have worked with these people in, in different capacities, to make sure we can get the right, um, next leader for, for Campbell. Um, to really kinda continue the great work that's going on at the high school right now. I mean, you got to see three of our soon-to-be graduates here and, and just like the excellence that, that, that's being produced right now. Um, as a, as a principal who was at a school that did senior projects, um, just listening to these kids, I mean, those are awesome. Like I can, you can tell they went into such depth there. I'm really excited to go next week to kinda see everyone's kinda final projects and everything like that. Um, and so, there, there's a lot of good work going on at Campbell. You know, we are gonna miss Jake, but the reality is we gotta hire someone new. Um, and we have some really good candidates and I think we can continue the good work, you know, at the high school. So, the intent the whole time has to bring a candidate to the board, um, for nomination at the next board meeting, the second one in May. We're still on schedule to do that, as we intend to be. Um, unfortunately, knock on wood, right now, there's no other high school principal jobs open, so we're in good shape. We're not gonna lose anyone suddenly, hopefully, through this process. So, there's just an update on, on the principal search.
Thank you.
Alright, next is, uh, grant assurances. So, you have a link in, um, there. And, uh, it's the overview of the grant assurances. This is a yearly thing. Um, Andrew, you're gonna have to sign it at some point, um, as, as the board chair. What the grant assurances are, Dan, you're new here, is we get grants from the state, um, for various things, title grants, um, so on and so forth. And essentially what the grant assurances say is that we will follow the rules that are required of the various grants that we get. If this grant, for example, is intended for special education, we're gonna use those funds for special education, right? We're not gonna say we're gonna do this for special education and then go buy, you know, a new wrestling bat or something like that, right? It has to be for the intent and purpose that you has. There's a lot, Sarah, our Dr. Taylor's our, our, our primary grant writer here in the district does the vast majority of it.
Let's me.
And it's a, it's a, yeah, lucky you. And it's, uh, it can be a very lengthy process at times, cause you have to go back and forth and get approval from the state, um, with the various things and everything like that. So, the grant assurance is all those rules. Um, it also, um, makes sure that, that, um, you know, we, we are aware that they're existing and the different grants that they are and everything like that. So, if you go through the documents, about sixteen pages, um, that's in summary what it, what it's all representing there. Well, I wanna bring it to your attention, is we have to sign this by June first. Um, right now, because of, of what's kinda happening, there's pending lawsuits regarding, uh, grants in general, both here at the state level and in the federal, um, level right now. We've been fortunate that, um, nothing's really affected us at this point, right? You know, we, there was some concern, um, earlier this year on whether or not some of the, um, executive orders from the president was gonna affect the school funding and some of the school grants. It, it was not, you know, we were, we were good in that capacity. Um, so we've been kinda business as usual. But there is some litigation. We're not involved in any of this litigation, but there's litigation that is happening both at the federal and state level. So, our advice from, you know, the school board association and also from our own attorneys is to hold off on signing the grant assurances until as long as possible. So, while this traditionally be, I just bring it, we sign it and we move on, I want you to be aware of the grant assurances and we're gonna probably take this down to the last week in May. In case anything emerges, we don't wanna sign this document, some sort of lawsuit changes the dynamics of the grants and we've committed ourselves to something else. I think we'll be fine. I really think we're gonna be fine. Um, that should be business as normal in terms of all our, our, the grant funding and, and we're not solely so dependent on it, but obviously we have positions and, and expenses that are dependent on grants. Um, so we wanna make sure that, that it happens. But I want you to be aware of the assurances. We'll have it back on the agenda next board meeting. Hopefully, a couple more weeks have passed, we might have more clarity on whether it's the go-ahead to, to go ahead and sign everything. But otherwise, we might wait until the very last week of May there to, to go forward with it. So, just giving you that update and wondering if you have any questions.
We're good.
Alright, Spanish, uh, LMS. I wish I had a better update. Um, that is the same, uh, kinda plan that we, uh, that we presented last time, that, the link there. Um, because unfortunately, we have not found a Spanish teacher for the middle school. We continue to interview high school Spanish teachers who apply, who then take a high school Spanish job after we have offered them our middle school job. So, we're oh for three in that capacity, um, where we've brought someone in, interviewed them, the interview went really well and then we offered them the job. They said, can I think about it? And clearly got another offer from a high school. Well, I know factually, they got other offers from high schools and they took the high school job. So, um, at this point, we are gonna kinda move forward with, with plan B. You know, if we do get some sort of, um, frankly, miracle at this point, and that we can find a qualified middle school Spanish teacher, we will do that. But otherwise, we're gonna start looking at, um, these online and virtual ways. We're gonna really start to put the pieces in place if V-Lax is that option. Um, or if we're gonna use a different, uh, program such as Edge Newbies, another kind of work at your own pace kinda Spanish program. Now, and we're also gonna be talking to, to the high school teachers to, to make sure if they can provide support, what that's gonna look like, possibly before school, after school, wherever the capacity is. Along with the supervision, that would be if a student was working on this online program during the school day, how we kinda do that, um, through that. The additional unified art there that we need to fulfill in middle school, we're gonna move forward with the, uh, the bulk of that position being, um, uh, s- uh, Strategies for Success. Sorry. Um, the Strategies for Success class that we've run in the past, that kinda works on those executive functioning skills, real life skills for students, um, at that kinda middle school level. Um, we will continue to look for the Spanish teacher, um, but we are, are, we're not optimistic that we'll be able to fill it. So, we are gonna move forward with plan B and start working through families to get everything kinda set up in that way, so.
Any questions from the board?
It's not surprising.
No, that's what it is.
Alright, last thing, this should be quick and I just need this, to say this out loud, so it gets in the minutes and then we can send this to the state and make us happy. So, this is the, the NOI, this is the, the stay on the building aid list. It's just one, one last clarity for them, uh, cause the way they worded something to me that we would be committed to the project, but we're not. So, while we stay on the list with the new building project and that's what's being sent in for the building aid, we are under no commitment to put that on the March ballot in March twenty-sixth. But if we were to put a new building, a new building project on the ballot in March twenty-sixth, it would have to be that project and written in there would have to be some contingency if we were granted, uh, building aid. So, I just need to say that official statement.
So, it would have to be that project if we wanted.
Building in.
Right. We could put another project on.
Yes, and that's what we were clarifying with states. So, we've, we're gonna talk later, right? About GMS project that's gonna be more renovation-based in some capacity, right? Um, that's a different project than the new building, right? That does not follow the application, um, that we did for building aid for the last year one. So, we'd have to reset ourselves in line for the building aid if we were gonna do that project right there.
Would we, not that there's any reason to, but would we be able to stay, even if we put something that was not, didn't comply with that application on and it failed, could we still stay on the list for the other thing?
For the new building?
Yeah.
I don't know. I can ask that question if we would stay.
I've, I've been just wondering, like, do, do we automatically get bumped if we put a completely different project on?
Yeah. I will get clarifying question.
I don't think, I think it's irrelevant, but I, it's just a matter of.
I know there's a window of time where you have, it's essentially three years, but it's like thirty-two months, cause of the timing of stuff. Where you have to get, if you put a building forward, you gotta get it approved, right?
Yeah, that was like three years.
Yeah, right. So, there's that window of time. Um, but, uh, if we're doing completely different projects.
To get on, I don't think there's a requirement to put it on the ballot. You just have to try within three years, but I never contemplated asking that other question.
Yeah, I can get clarity on that. Uh, I'm gonna lean towards no, to be, to be honest, because.
It'd be kinda doubled.
Yeah, I think a lot of people would be trying to do something similar, like how many different projects can we get on the list, you know?
Oh, no, no. I didn't mean to get another one on the list. I meant if we, cause, you know, at a certain point, you can't get, you know, there's only a certain time that you can get on the list, right? So, if we, if we came up with another project, we weren't, didn't enter the list for the other project and we put that other project on the ballot and it failed, would we, could we still be on the list?
I'll get clarity of that and that might be true, because you haven't put that other project onto the building aid list. And again, like continued, the huge conquer project is ahead of us, so no one's getting anything.
Wasn't this due on May first?
Yes, but we got it in.
Oh, okay.
And they sent it back to us and they accepted it and they said, can you just get something, this literal conversation recorded in, in the minutes for us at a board meeting?
Hopefully, hopefully my additions didn't screw it up.
No, it's my, um, and I said, sure, I'll get that done. So, they had granted us, they were like, cause we sent it in the beginning of April for this exact reason, in case we needed to come back and do something different.
Okay.
So, yeah. So, that's it. So, I got on that. I got my piece on the record here, so we're good to go.
Alright.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Andrew, do you have any questions? I don't wanna ignore you.
No questions so far. Thanks.
Alright, good. Alright, moving on to business and operations. We, Ms. Darling, what do we have?
Um, so I did wanna say, I, I know we've been talking about projections and wanting to get those out there. Um, I've been working with Anne, who, you know, obviously has a lot more experience in helping with this process. Um, and she's been working to really kind of narrow in on getting those encumbrances to be as accurate as possible. So, she said by the end of next week, we should be in really good shape to start that, you know, getting some more real projections. So, I am anticipating for the next meeting to have something for you, um, with regard to that. Um, I did wanna update with regard to solar. Um, I've been in touch with, um, Kay from Dynamic Grid. Um, and at this point, we're in a holding pattern with Eversource. Um, she did, uh, copy me on, you know, some emails that she's working with Eversource and, um, there's a discrepancy with something with regard to the meter number that we currently have, not matching the, um, account numbers that they have on file. I have been a part of these emails and I'm not sure really exactly where the problem lies. It seems like there's something in the portal, um, that is not working properly. Um, I have asked if she can, you know, request that somebody from Eversource actually come out to the site, so we can expedite this, because we're clearly way past the ten-day window um, that she submitted the original report. Um, but we are still waiting on that. So, um, until we get the meter, we're still, um, in a holding pattern, unfortunately. Um, I did ask her, um, with regard to the battery, the, the storage, um, component, uh, where, if we're still on schedule for the summer. She did say late summer. She was hoping that we would be, that, that, that's still the plan. Um, but I don't have anything more concrete than that. And I did ask if there was any preparatory work that we would need to do over the summer and she also indicated in writing um, that there was nothing on our end that we would need to do, that, that would be her people taking care of that, running the line underground to the pad location. So, that's where we are with that. I know that's not what we were hoping to hear, but.
Question from my side.
I was banking on your, I was banking on your camera being on for this.
It's very.
Okay, I don't wanna dis, I don't wanna disappoint, so.
At least for this part.
Alright. So, uh, I'd like to get requests, actual dates from Kay. I don't wanna hear late summer. Late summer is when our kids are going back to school and to actually do construction by that time is, is not ideal, so we should be pushing for exact dates and not a timeframe.
Okay, clear enough. I will get that.
Yep. Right? And if there's a delivery of a storage container, you know, with battery, et cetera, obviously the ideal time to do that is during the summer, not late summer, again, in case they're coming back into the building.
Absolutely.
So, these general, these general dates of, you know, spring, summer, next year, like, it's gotta stop, right? Firm dates, get it documented.
Okay.
Hold them accountable.
Absolutely.
Of course, even when they give us firm dates, we can't hit those either, so it just seems like there's no dates.
That's the challenge, right? But at least we have something.
In writing, right. Right, right. I agree. They could've built this battery backup thing like fifty times over at this point.
Right. There, there should be no reason why this is delayed. It's been two years, so.
Why is there a ten-day window? Like, what's the, is there any type of consequence for Eversource not meeting that?
That, that's what is confusing to me. I don't understand why we're not further in this process. I mean, if there's a ten-day window, it, there should be something that happens when that, they're not in compliance, but.
Yeah, I think what's challenging right now is, um, this might be an Eversource issue, but we just have no trust with Dynamic Grid.
Yeah.
Right? Like, so.
Well, and if it's a, I think the problem too is if it's an Eversource issue, we should be able to lean on Dynamic Grid to solve the issue with Eversource, right? And that's been the problem as our consultant or whatever they do, they have provided minimal, if any, value throughout this process, so.
And I, if it's a matter of, I don't, this is not my world, I don't understand. Um, but I'm a simple person. If it's one meter says this number and this thing says a different number, someone should come look at the meter. I don't understand why that.
Yeah.
Can we send the picture and text it to them?
Yeah, so, I mean.
And she's done that and that, I've seen that in the correspondence, but again, we need to, she needs to be pushing on Eversource to come out and resolve that.
So, they're solar.
They're solar. Here we are.
And, and there's nothing in our contract with Dynamic Grid that if they're late to date, that, to their deliverables, that there's repercussions?
Not really. I mean, it delays, cause as what Kay will say, they're eating the costs associated with it. So, like, our electrical costs over at, um, LMS is a stagnant amount, right? Like, it's ninety-seven thousand dollars or whatever it is, right? Um, every year, until this thing, like, until the clock starts ticking. And then, you know, we're pushing back that six-year kinda timeframe where they're paying for the cost of everything and we have to make that decision. So, ultimately, our kind of, um, money that we're paying is consistent. So, if we, this didn't exist for just hypothetic. So if we, this didn't exist for just hypotheticals, like, arguments, we're paying ninety-seven thousand a year, or whatever it is. Um, for electrical there, if we just look at the other schools, if we didn't have this contract in place, we'd be paying like a hundred and fifteen, probably a hundred and twenty. So that's what we're saving by this being delayed, right? Like, cause we're not having the, this is what it was explained to me. Like, you know, this is why there's not something more concrete in the contract that says, if you don't follow this, this is the payment that you kind of play. The only thing we kind of got out of it was that clock on the six years. We said, we're not, you can't start it until the next fiscal year.
After the system is turned on and incomplete.
With the whole project is complete, right? So if this, we're in April right now, I mean, when we talked about this, this was like January. I want to say late January, early February, cause it was before the voting. And if, in my opinion, how we have this in writing, if this cr- crosses over to July first, we then get another year before the.
Was that an addendum to the contract or?
It was an email and writing that I have from the lawyers that would hold up. So that's what I got, so.
Cause I, not to put a damper on the whole mood of about solar, but when we go to connect the battery storage to the whole system. That, like, expect lots of regulatory stuff with Eversource, because we're not, uh, just talking about a transformer. We're talking about something that has kilojoules of energy storage connecting into the.
I mean, when you go back and look at the original contract, I think that's why this was always intended, this aspect of it to happen in the summer. Right? Like, when the school is essentially at its minimal capacity, right? You don't have all the kids, all the staff in the building. Like, sure, we got our summer staff and some smaller, but it's just very different. So as that transition kind of phase happens, intend was it for it to be during the summer? I mean, where it got was three, two, three years ago now at this point, you know, so.
No, I'm, I'm, it's just a little bit different getting active energy from the pole and a transformer. Through an inverter with solar to massive amount of energy storage.
Yep.
So there's, I would expect similar delays just hooking up the batteries.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Uh, and then I also, um, with regard to end of year, um, I've connected a document here for you. Uh, we've just started putting in some items that, um, we'd be looking to use some end of year funding for, just to kind of have a starting point. And I'm, um, working on getting some quotes for some of these things. So I'll have everything attached in there. Um, just so everyone can kind of start taking a look at this and weighing in, um, and we can prioritize some of these items. Just so we have a starting point.
This is like our idealist, we're not committing to any of this quite yet, just like as we.
Yeah.
Like, just started looking at it.
Have we approved the gator, the golf cart, like, multiple times at this point?
Yeah, I know from last year, cause I remember sitting in the meeting, a gator was bought for the grounds crew. So this would be a gator for like the athletic department.
It's a different gator.
Yeah, and it's like kind of specifically for like injuries on the field. Like, I, I can rarely remember. I think it was the Friday night game, right? Like, the poor kid on the other team, like, broke his leg. Yeah, well, I held a backpack or something, but like, people were literally just carrying the poor kid, like, to the, the family's car and stuff like that, so. Um, now that was an extreme circumstance, but, you know.
I just saw gator. I'm like, I feel like we've approved this a bunch of times.
Yeah.
Um, all right, sounds good. Any questions from the board for Julie? Hearing none, we will move into our curriculum instruction and assessment update. Mr. Taylor.
Okay, so, um, as Danny said, academically, we are full in, um, assessment mode. It's craziness. So, um, we've talked about assessment in past meetings, so, um, I really wanted to highlight tonight, um, our mentor program. We, um, have, we have a solid mentor program here. Um, but I started meeting early on with our three mentor coordinators. We have one from each building. GMS is Sandy Doucette, LMS is Caroline Lee, and then CHS is Anna Helbling. And we meet monthly and from the onset, we've been talking about the need to make a more robust program. To really support our new teachers, to keep them, to have longevity in our staff and make sure that they're feeling. That they're getting what they need in order to make that happen. Um, so we've been making some tweaks to the program and throughout the year, coming up with ideas, brainstorming. Talking with our new teachers through, we had a new teacher mid-year, um, kind of celebration, like, getting them together. Yay, you made it through halfway year, how things going, getting feedback from them. Um, so we have kind of done almost an overhaul of the whole program. That will start next year, um, outlining very specific things. Instead of having, for example, each month, the mentors and mentor coordinators meet with the new teachers in their own buildings. But the new teachers, when we all came together, expressed how awesome it was to meet again. Cause they hadn't seen each other since the very first start of the year, when we do the new teacher orientation. They were like, hey, how are you doing? You know, so, um, that led us to, you know what? We should do themed PD for them together during each month. Bring everybody together instead of isolated in their silos, cause they all have similar needs. They wanted informa- more information on assessment, more information on classroom management, more information on behavior, all of those kinds of things. So we were like, we can do thematic month meetings with them so that they can, um, get those needs met. And then we did an hour schedule breakdown that's really, to meet with their mentors, that's really focused in many hours. In the start of the year and then kind of dwindles down towards the end of the year. Because the teachers were expressing, when we first started, we were like, oh my gosh, how do we navigate Power School? Set up my gradebook, do this, do, like, those kinds of things are really heavy in the middle, in the beginning of the year. And up to prepping for parent teacher conferences in November. And then it kind of slows down a little bit. So I just wanted to, um, let you guys know, we're really focused on getting this robust program off the ground. So that we are providing our new teachers what they need and then give the three mentor coordinators a shout out for all their work that they've been doing with me on doing this. Because it's been a lot, if you come into my office, I have things splashed of, of my whiteboard. It's craziness. Um, so, yeah, it's been a real push to make this a really effective program for them. So we're excited to see it now. We're ready to finish the handbook and put a nice bell on it, like, yes, we're ready to go.
So we have, uh, this is changing gears a little bit, but we have, um, standardized testing, the SAS coming up, right?
Yes, um, the middle school actually started already, science, yeah.
Um, how long does it take to get, like, the results from those?
So the, um, last year, I was in, usually there, you can see them right away, um, through the dashboard. And when I first came here, the teachers didn't have access to the dashboard. They have access to the dashboard now, cause I'm like, of course they need that.
They all know they have access to the dashboard.
Um, we've walked through some of it. I'm gonna be doing refreshers too for them because it's been a bit since we've been on to the dashboard. But, um, they can see it. Last year, they held ELA results because the writing was being hand scored. Cause it was a brand new assessment. This year, it is being scored through the computer with some hand checks. To do some checks and balances. They do that every year anyway. So I haven't seen anything that they're holding ELA results. Um, so we should see them as, as they're done.
Uh, so was it?
You won't see them right away.
No, 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 I'm not, I wasn't expecting that. Uh, so was it like AI, like, that's reading that then, if it's?
Yeah, they do. So actually, I got to participate in a range finding, um, when they were doing the new writing assessment. So I participated in a group that we looked at. So I did the eighth grade group. And we looked at several different student samples. We looked at the rubric. We were calibrating as a group. It had already been done by another group and the scores were interesting. So they do that kind of calibration with several different groups to find this range binding. And then they input that data into the AI system that then looks for those things. And is it foolproof? No. Um, so that's why they have human scores that will, they'll randomly pull. A few and see how the score did compared to what they would give it.
Gotcha. So my actual question from all of that was, um, have you already set aside time for review? With, cause I know, we talked earlier in the year about teachers needing some time to like actually process some of the information. Um, i- is that, I mean, have you either scheduled that or is it something that's on the radar to do?
So we won't have time this year. Um, because my last meeting with GMS is tomorrow. And we won't have, and then the, so the way the meeting schedule flows, I won't have scores. Until June.
Gotcha.
Because the window doesn't close until June first. And then the, um, make, then it's makeup week till June sixth. So there's not, and then we're done though next week. So to try to schedule a data meeting with teachers the last week of school, good luck.
Is it something that we can, is it something that we can kind of bring to the beginning of next year though?
Oh, yes. That will be one of my first things that we do is look at that data, um, from the spring. You have to. That's really the only time that you can, because it comes out so late.
Hmm.
Um, so.
Is there anything, uh, like, with respect to like, you know, they, they've been teaching all year, right? And they've, they've kind of seen, they have, they've had some testing benchmarks already. Um, I'm not a teacher, so I'm asking this question. Is there anything that, uh, would be like fresh on their minds at this point, if they were to be reviewing that data now? That would be beneficial that we should be at least asking them to sort of like, kind of write down or something. So that way, after they've gone through the summer, they have a whole new crop of kids coming in, it'll be fresh in their minds. I don't know if that's even beneficial, but I'm just kind of curious from a.
It is. It's beneficial to look at. So I look at the SAS as almost a summative assessment for your whole year. Because, um, especially when you're really truly teaching with standards. If you're really truly teaching with standards, this is, like I said, I think I said it in previous board meeting, it's like a one-to-one check. To see how your students are doing comparatively to the standards and, um, the state. So once, we, we won't get that data for, till next December, I don't even know. Um, so there is benefit in them pulling up the dashboard, looking at their class, how they did. And kind of reflecting on their students' growth throughout the year. It's gonna be easier next year when we actually have the modulars and interims embedded throughout the year. So that then there is something to compare to. Right now, there's really not unless they practiced. Um, you know, and they threw in a modular here, there, an interim. Um, there's not really a way to do that comparison for growth. But if you're not using the modulars and interims, it's really good to have conversation as a curriculum grade level. How's our curriculum working? What's good, what's not good? Um, and then looking at it through the eyes of student growth and where did our students leave us? And talking about transitions into the next year. So third grade going into fourth grade. Where did they leave third grade in relation to the standards and proficiency levels? And having kind of that teacher-to-teacher transition conversation. Here's where they are according to these standards.
But are we ever gonna be able to do that if they're coming out so late?
Um, you can do it in the fall, like, once they have their classes. Like, that's part of what I can do when I go in and say, okay, here's the third grade, fourth grade teachers.
So this will be a fall, it'll be a fall thing that you have, okay. Cool. That's all I wanted to know.
Mr. Mitchell, I saw your hand. I don't know if you still wanted to jump in.
I was just gonna say that we also ask the teachers to collect anecdotal evidence during the testing session, just so certain results. We kind of have it anchored back to, so for instance, you know, like, why were math, why did we have to perform in math? And you can go back to the anecdotal evidence of like, oh man, they faced a lot of fraction questions when, you know, like, just to kind of bring us back and anchor us to the actual testing session. To hopefully answer some of the unexplainable things that may appear when we finally get to analyze it in, cause as you were saying that, by the time you get to it in September. It's not about individual student performance, but it's really about curricular effectiveness and the overall program and what's working and what's not. So it's, it's more of a universal, so we need to have it anchored back to like, what was it like that day and night?
Yeah. And it's also too, we have to take with a grain, this is the first time third graders are doing this kind of test. That's why, again, the modulars and the interims are so important, so that it's not testing day and they're like, what the heck is this? You know, how do I navigate this? Where do I put the mouse? What am I doing? I don't have a clue, you know? Um, so it just becomes something that's comfortable to them. They're like, oh yeah, I've seen this before. Um, and looking at the different kinds of question types. And it was really fun when the state added the narrative to the writing. So it's completely random. The student could get an informational text, an opinion. Or a narrative now. And the narrative could be a personal narrative. Tell me about a time that you were a leader. Or it could be, um, here's the first part of a story, now finish it. So. Yeah, it, it depends on what kind of writer you are. And if you get the informational, you get the lucky task of reading three texts to then synthesize that information and write about it. Well, my neighbor gets to write a story, you know, and then I might be a really creative writer. And I am not good at nonfiction, or another person is not a good creative writer and needs, like, is a great nonfiction writer. I'm like, thanks, that's so fun to do that to us. And we've been giving a lot of, I mean, I'm a quiet person. I don't say anything. Just kidding. Um, I've given a lot of feedback to the state, um, on this. In terms of the writing test becomes a reading test, because if they can't read the reading material. Then it's not a true assessment of their writing ability. Um, so every time I look at our writing scores, I always take that into consideration. Because it's not a fair assessment. They have been taking these things under advisement, cause I'm not the only one that tells them this. About possibly looking at incorporating a video, I don't know. But, oh, we'll see what happens.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, sliding into our approval of public minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve our April sixteenth public minutes.
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
All right, any revisions, questions, comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please. We have roll call. Matt?
Hi.
Uh, Dan?
Hi.
Andrew?
I'll abstain.
Okay. And I'm an I, so that passes three zero one. Moving into new business, GMS project, um, I see we have a needs assessment presentation from Mr. Mitchell?
Yeah, I'm, I'll jump in a little bit at the end, but, um, Dan's gonna go over, this is, uh, the same little tweaks. But essentially the same presentation we did at the facilities improvement committee, right? Um, and at the end, just some additional notes and stuff like that. I changed the font on here so slightly, so don't be freaked out.
Oh, you did?
I feel like he's done this presentation so many times, he probably doesn't even need the font.
Yeah, there was two different fonts and it was driving me nuts, so I had to like.
I go through all of my documents at work doing that. No, everything's gonna be this font. I don't care which one, just pick one.
That's, that's Google's fault, cause I mean, this is just a. Whoever's, it was driving me nuts.
All right. We all have our things.
All right, so, um, this is ba- again, basically what I presented a few weeks back, uh, ago to FIC. Which basically just lays out, um, in general, the educational considerations, um, when we're thinking about the needs of, of GMS. And so I started with a little bit of a history lesson and I do admit that some of these dates may be a little bit off. Because some of them are based on when bonds are passed and some of them were based on, is basically construction. Uh, but you also notice that, um, almost all of it was done well before I was born. So, um, generally, the, what makes up Griffin Memorial School is, um, you have the original thirties building, which is no longer in use. Was still part of the building. And then from there, um, you had three rooms in nineteen fifty-eight, another two rooms in around nineteen sixty-two. Another four rooms, library, gym, main office area in nineteen seventy-three. Uh, during this time, there was actually two different buildings. There was, uh, two different buildings. And then in nineteen seventy-eight, they added six rooms, cafeteria, gym, that connected the two buildings. And then in nineteen eighty-three, they added, uh, the three buildings, uh, the three rooms onto the front. That kind of complete. And then nineteen eighty-three, they added, uh, the three buildings, uh, the three rooms onto the front. That kind of completes the main building that is, that is GMS. Uh, then on around twenty-ten, they added the two-pack portable and then in twenty eighteen with the, with bringing in, um, full DK. They brought in the four-pack portable. So that, now we have the full concept of the building that is Griffin Memorial School. So. Um, there were some key dates in history that I brought up, um, that all happened between nineteen fifty-three. And today. So in nineteen seventy-five, the Individual Disabilities Education Act was passed. Um, the American Disabilities Act was passed in nineteen seventy-three, then the government did nothing with it, but in nineteen seventy-seven, they were like, we really should do something about this. And then in nineteen ninety, they were like, we really should extend this. And that's when five oh four, um, the application of the, of five oh four. Um, went across all workplaces and school settings. Um, and then in twenty twenty-three, the New Hampshire Legislature, uh, passed. Uh, the screening intervention for dyslexia and related disorders requirement. The reason why I bring those three things and obviously there are many others. But these three pieces of legislation are really what has driven, um, small group and individual instruction. So it expanded the thought of the classroom out from that class of twenty, thirty kids with one teacher. And that's how instruction and education happened. And really moving more into, uh, personalized learning and personalized needs. And with personalized learning and personalized needs means a rethinking of the educational space. So all of that happened after the design and building, with the exception of the three classrooms that are right at the front of the building. So GMS was designed before all of these things went into place. So, um, now to just basically break down the. Educational impacts and the condition of GMS, I've broken it down into a few categories. So, um, the fir- the first one I'll talk about is the lack of a core. Um, when I talk about a core, if you look at most modernly designed schools. And in fact, whenever you talk about, uh, Campbell, we always talk about. The, what the core was designed for. And it's always that six hundred number, that the core was nine six hundred. And the core is that space in which everything else kind of grows from. And when you design a core, you design that core so that those services that. Any student can or may need to access are somewhat centralized. We do not have that at GMS. And so that lack of core, um, creates long distances to receive those support services. Um, and then also many of those services are integrated or connected. And without having them in a core space, we're again creating, um, unnecessary space and distance. So usually that core, not only do you have everything close, but then it's usually equidistant. Everything else in the building is equidistant to that core. So we're talking main office, we're talking related services. We're talking nurse. Oftentimes, we're even talking about gym cafeteria specials. Those are all kind of equidistant. Currently, what we have is a long walk for a first grader who, by the way. Is usually expelling some sort of fluids to get to the nurse's office. Or in case of a response or emergency, the nurse getting to that first grade. If a student is receiving related service specifically OT and PT, that is by the main office, that is a long walk and that's lack of. Uh, that's loss of instructional or impact time, um, due just to kind of transportation. Um, and then also it just creates unnecessary spacing. So oftentimes you take, you talk about related services that, especially at the younger time. Um, students who receive OT may not necessarily also receive say speech. But it's beneficial that many times if a student is receiving OT, um, that they can receive speech at the same time. Because those services can build on each other. Right now, those spaces are so far apart that it just doesn't make sense. One person is usually operating out of their general space in order to do that. Speech tends to move a little easier than OT just because of equipment-wise, but again, if you have that core space and that core service. Then all those things can happen a bit more naturally. Um, second thing is inadequate spaces. Um, I just focused on a few. Obviously, I know many people could have opinions and I'm not even brushing the surface of inadequate spaces. But I think the two that I wanted to highlight the most, um, are our main office. Our main office is. Not centrally located, but interior located. Uh, if any of you have had the joy of being in my office. And you've also had the joy of going on a cruise in an interior cabin room, the feel is the same. You don't know what's going on outside once that door is closed. That is great for privacy. It is not ideal for supervision, um, and security purposes. Also, even our main office itself does not have a direct line of sight to the outside.
It's kind of crazy, like the more I've thought about this, a parent reached out to me, not just differently, but about an issue and then just got my mind kind of thinking. Cause they're asking a question about dismissing their child from elementary school and stuff. And so I've just been noticing it when I've been over there. Like, there's significant space between the vestibule for the parent, for any person coming into the building. Front office. A lot of bad things can happen in that space right there. And you know, you look at the high school as an example, you get into that vestibule, there's a window right there, right? Like you have to kind of talk to someone. Same thing has happened at my kid's elementary school. Like I'm in a vestibule talking to someone. I put my ID up right to that window there to show that I'm the parent picking up my kid. And we don't have that. Now, I think we're fortunate that it's a good community and it's a close community and people know each other and all that type of stuff, but. Like, the more I see that, the more I'm like, that is, that's rough.
Yeah.
That's rough.
So I, I, I'll give you a perfect anecdote today. Um, I, as everyone knows, we had about an hour there where the school was technically in what I call a, a shelter in place, it was a soft shelter in place. Um, we knew that the events of town were happening distance, but the police also put us in shelter in place. So the place where I put myself, the best position I found myself to, to kind of keep security of the school was. Um, in a random chair in the hallway by the main door. I wasn't in my office, so I was away from my computer. I was away from, from telephone. I, I just basically had my cell phone.
Like I had to, I'm calling his office phone.
Yeah.
No one's picking up because of that.
Yeah, but the best line of sight that I could create to basically know what was going on in that side world, also keep eyes on the portable and any motion that was happening outside. Was in the random, the lobby, the hallway. I mean, that was the assessment that I made, that this is probably, after I did a surveillance of making sure all exterior doors were secure. Which by the way, is a long walk to, to sure that all exterior doors are secure, just to kind of position myself there. It's good for line of sight, it was good for observation, it was not good for a kind of function. So that's kind of what that, that lack of core. Um, also inadequate spaces, um, we've just kind of made do with what we've had. Again, built prior to all of those, all of that legislation. So now what you, you have is, is converted spaces. And we're gonna get to a little bit more specifically, but now we have what we call the J suite, which is the student service suite. That is three student service people in a carved out space. That is the equivalent of one-third of a classroom. And so how they provide their services is they've created. Kind of an anti-room space that they all share their computer and then there's kind of two small rooms. Uh, but these are our kids that are in the most need, obvious, often in their most vulnerable state. And we don't really have what I consider adequate private or confidential space, um, for them, for them to service.
If you've been in the other two schools and can think of the counseling suite in both their respective schools, now we're talking bigger bodies, so that's part of the, the larger space. But there's a lot of privacy space in those capacities because of the nature of the work that's got being done, that frankly just doesn't exist. They do a great job with the space they have. But it's, I mean, high school is really big, that's a little different battle because of the college planning and, and stuff going in. But just think about middle school and they have two counselors sharing a wonderful space that's, that's properly like done in a common space and that more private spaces. Where here at the elementary school. Our most vulnerable students, if we're being honest, are in a much, much more challenging space.
And then you take your vulnerable educational learners, you have four case managers sharing one space that is the equivalent of two-thirds of a classroom. You have three speech language pathologists that are sharing the other third of that classroom. Um, this isn't an ideal learning space. Um, and it's not ideal for, so oftentimes what happens is you're either in a space that's not ideal for learning. Or they take those services and they do them elsewhere. And that's oftentimes in the hallway.
And I just wanna.
To be honest with you, that is not the level of privacy that those students deserve is to receive a student, to receive services with a case manager. In the hallway that is basically open for anyone to see.
Yeah, and just to put like a number on this, because I was trying to think of a good number to try and explain this, the four case managers in one room. That, if you think of a, a smaller room too, it's not even a normal classroom size. We have a, uh, but these case managers are servicing about twenty-five stu- that's twenty-five, excuse me, seventy-five students that these, these case managers are, are doing. So our special need size there in that room is seventy-five students getting serviced out of it. Think about if you had a classroom. With seventy-five kids in it. Now granted, this is special, they're not all in there at the same time. They're coming and going, they're coming and going, coming and going. But no way would we find it adequate if we had twenty-five kids in a classroom, let alone seventy-five, right? Like. So we gotta kind of think of that special like capacity. I mean, these are our kids that need the most support. They should be in a space that, that is their space that they're not sharing with seventy-four of their peers, right? Maybe sharing with some of their peers, but not that many. And for those adults who are working with all these kids with, in the most like needy programs, that is just, that, that, that's just not, not okay. And I know that people know that, but just like, that's a number to it that I think people have to kind of think about. We wouldn't accept seventy-five kids in a classroom, right? Why are we doing that with special?
And so that puts you into, so you, you either settle for that or to rectify that, you move to other spaces, which I don't think anyone would, uh, consider ideal learning spaces. Which are hallways, alcoves, cafeteria during lunchtimes.
Stage.
The stage, yeah.
So I, I have a question about this, cause you know, thinking about it, sometimes when we're talking about these things, people are, i- if they're, if they're not. Really grasping the educational impact of it, they're, they're thinking about it from a financial perspective. And so, uh, you know, correct me if I'm wrong, but. When we're talking about special services, we're providing those special services with the hope of helping these students get to the place where they're not needing. You know, hopefully that's the goal is to get them off of special services.
The goal should always in special education is eventually to get you off of your.
Right. And so we know by looking at our budgets, that special services are a huge line item, right? So if we're more effectively able to deliver those things, we stand a better chance at getting kids to where they need to be sooner, therefore saving.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll give a very personal example myself, right? Like I was identified as a young student, right? Like I, I was identified for speech and language, right? And I was in a really big elementary school. I would have private speech, right? Not shared in any other spaces, nothing like that. And eventually I was able to be discharged from special education, which would lessen the amount of money that like was attached to me as a student, right? Which saved the district money because I got adequate services when I was a young kid. And like just a note, disabilities don't go away. If like you pay attention. You can hear my disability at times or my word choice. I stay away from certain sounds and stuff like that. So, but. That is like how the system should work. Like we should always be working to like discharge a child from special education. And if you want to just think from a dollars and cents, if we are discharging students at a higher rate from education, we are saving the district money.
So there, there is, there is a direct cost benefit potentially of, I mean, it's not just something that we should be doing. We should be doing this because the kids deserve.
Go back since nineteen seventy-three, we're legally obligated to.
Well, we're legally obligated to, but like someone might argue that, oh, well, we're, you know, well, we're giving it to them, so you know, whether it's effective, you know, whether we're doing it in the most effective means. Like, I, I mean, I personally believe that we should be doing it in the most effective means regardless. But if you want to look at it truly from just a cost perspective, like there, there is potential for cost savings. If we can deliver these things effect, more effectively.
Okay, where did I leave a?
Sorry.
I think I kind of covered that in the, so, um, I want to talk about the classrooms a little bit because when you, when you talk about our classrooms. Um, just based on blueprints and square footage, um, most of them meet the mark for general square footage. Um, however, again, designed for, um, times past as opposed to times present and future. The, it's really more about the setup and the layout. Um, they were not set up with flow in mind. They were not set up with twenty-first century skills in mind. They're set up as, they were set up for a classroom that was with. You call it the sage on the stage, the teacher in the front and the rows of students. In addition to that, just general architectural design. Um, and again, these are things, I'm not saying this is just things we need to address. Um, the lighting is terrible and lighting is not ideal for learning. Um, the flow of the classroom, whereas you can create small group space and other areas and opportunities to learn, those don't exist. And then just operationally, most of these rooms, even though they have square footage, they also don't factor in, um. Any type of storage, whether student or classroom storage. And so that's eating away at this. So we've had to supplement with. Usually the large armoire style wheeled closets, um, stacked bins, um, large cubbies. And then also a lot of it is moved out into the hallway in form of lockers, which, okay, it takes out of the classroom, but remember. Whereas there are also optional educational spaces in the hallways. So we're, we're, we're doubling up there. Um, so a lot of that stuff is also eating out. And addition to that, a number of the new, the rooms also lose a lot of square footage. To rather large HVAC contraptions. Um, and it becomes useless space because you, you can't sit on a, on a radiator, you can't even stack things on a radiator. It just becomes a big chunk out of the floor plan, um, that is just, um, not used. So. Oh, in addition to, there are just a few rooms that have temporary walls. And if you've ever been in a first, second cla- classroom with temporary walls, I mean. It's a nice thought, but it ain't doing much, you know, um. So, um, and then there's a, a term that I learned throughout this whole process called, uh, functional obsolescence, which just means is that. It's not doing what it was built for. Um, there are some key there. Our nurse's office is not a nurse's office. It is a functionally obsolete, um, boys locker room. Um, the storage in there is a shower. I, if you want to come visit, I'll show you exactly where the drain has been cement capped. Um, it has a inadequate bathroom, it has inadequate, inadequate private space. Because of course, it was designed to be a locker room, a middle school boys locker room. So we have nothing that is designed to be a nurse's space. One of our special services, special, um, education spaces was designed as a middle school, um, science lab. It makes a great, actually, large space and we've used it. In my five years, it's been a resource center housing tutors. It has been a preschool classroom, um, and it is now a, a specialized program. We've made good use of it. It's designed as a science lab. One of our preschool classrooms now. Um, was designed as a science lab. It, the, the network room is actually housed there and it's connected to the library, is built intentionally as a computer lab. Now that we no longer have computer lab, cause we've evolved into the set program where it's more into the classroom, cause that's where the devices are, we now have this space that. We can use it as a classroom, but I'll also tell you, if you go back to the, the general flow and layout of the building, it makes no sense. It, it's an island of a room, um, because it's just kind of right there at the middle at the intersection there, it's kind of no neighbors. So we needed another room for preschool. It doesn't make sense, cause it's far away from the other preschool classroom that's out in the two-pack portable. But we had a space and we could use it. Um, I do want to go back actually a little, or maybe I'm already getting to it. Oh, no, I'm coming to it next. Um. Let me see, so yeah, the main office originally designed as an overfull kind of extra educational space. Um, OT was a multipurpose room, or I may have that backwards, sorry. Um, and then we've just kind of cut and carved. So we have a lot of spaces that, um, are serving a purpose, but it wasn't their in, intended purpose. So that means we're making good use of space, but anything that I just named that is using those spaces. Means that we don't have a designed space for that. So we don't have a space that is designed to serve the purpose of a nurse, elementary nurse's office. We're using the locker room. We don't have an intentionally designed main office. We've used an overfull classroom. We don't have an intentionally designed OT PT space. We've used an overfull classroom. We don't have an intentionally designed speech and language pathology room. We use a third of a room quarter cutout. You know, so we're, because we're, we have this functional ob- obsolescence. It also means that we have s- places that don't have an intended purpose. If we had, oh, if we had an intended main office, you don't move that main office. If you have an intended nurse's office. Then you don't need to use another space from the nurse's office. We have spaces that we no longer function as what they were designed for, so we've had to use them for something different. Going on to just the general design and layout of the school, I jokingly refer to it as the sprawling ranch. I mean, that's, that's what it is. It's, it's a sprawling ranch that you just keep going. Um. It kind of creates two different issues, uh, response and maximization. So response, obviously just think about where the nurse's and the main office is. And your, the J suite, the, the student service suite. That is your cluster, your core of response personnel. If a classroom is calling for a response. Eighty percent of that response. eighty percent of that response is coming from the nurse, myself, Maura, one of the Js, or perhaps one of our our specialized service providers. So ninety percent of that is at that main office. It is a long walk if we're get being, if we're getting called down to the third, near the thirties building. Again, going back to the lack of core services. If you have, if you have a properly designed core, then everything is equidistant. So it doesn't matter what classroom is calling. If I'm in my office, it should be close to the same amount of time, no matter what room it's in. Right now, we have that long sprawling ranch, so our response times are limited based on that geography. That's also nurses both ways, and I'll remind you, it's an elementary school. I'll just say it. That's a long walk for a kid holding a barrel to get all the way to Miss Alexa's room. So it's not just about response and getting to them, it's also for them accessing the services. A child in crisis, no matter how big or small, it's a long walk to get to the J suite. And again, I'll go back to just today. Part of our protocols when we go into shelter space, as soft or as not is, is that we we put the school into a shelter in place. Today was a so, I called it a soft shelter in place. I know that word doesn't exist, but that was kind of, it was just like, let's get everyone in and just stay away from the outside. But part of that protocol is also just ensuring that all the exterior doors are in fact secure. So it's, it's a long walk to, you know, go and just kind of tug on all nine of our exterior doors. It's a long walk to kind of get back. Ideally, core service, equal walk, and you can maximize that. So the response time is obviously limited by this, the long, um, the sprawling ranch.
And as you talked to me today about, because when we were looking at this, and at some point kindergarten had transition to specials in the building, you know? And, you know, we're talking on the phone like, well, this is what Dan's like, this is what I'm gonna do, because there's gonna be a timeframe with those kids are outside coming into the building, right? And again, today, the issue was far, far away from schools. We were on the super side precaution of going into these sheltering places. But as an example, our most vulnerable youngest kids are not in the building, right? Like, so we're taking those kids, if this was a more severe safety situation, right? They have no access to them. Like, if we truly had the shelter in place in our respective buildings, right? There's no nurse's office for them. There's no main office for those kids. They are literally in a building upon themselves, our youngest kids, right? Now you can say, oh, we'll put fourth grade in there. You want to put fourth grade by themselves either? Like, you don't want to do that with any of your elementary.
Well, we have bath, uh, those are the ones that have bathrooms.
They have bathrooms, but what happens?
Isn't that a requirement, though, for the kindergarten?
What?
Don't they have to have bathrooms in the?
Well, preschool does, yeah. They do, but let's say one of those kid, let's say they're just having class, right? And they bump their head and now they're bleeding, right? But we're in a shelter in place. If we're in a more severe situation, we're stuck, right? Like, we can't get to, get that kid to safety. Now, we would figure it out in a, in a real, real situation, but like, that's not great.
But I was just asking that because it's not even really an option to move fourth grade in there, right? Because the the bathroom situation is what dictate, is one of the things that dictates what grades are in there, right?
Yeah. I mean, yes, uh, pre- um, preschool needs a dedicated bathroom. They don't necessarily need a classroom and a bathroom in the classroom. So it's not, it's not an easy one-to-one swap. Is that a hand raised by Andrew?
I don't know what that beep was.
No, he, um, he had to get off.
Oh, okay, alright. See, that was response. Um, and then just when you get to maximization, I kind of already, uh, referred to it too, which is that because of that long flow, there is a lot of lost learning time due to travel. And not just for special, it's a long walk for a student who receives speech, language, OTP, or special education. It's also a long walk, uh, for first grade to get to art or PE. Not so much as music. I mean, music is probably academically, I would say that music and library are probably the most centrally located. But it it is that long walk, it's that loss of 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 maximizing learning opportunity because of just travel from, again, the long sprawling ranch. I I always started this by GMS is a living artifact and a testament to the growth of the town. You know, as the town grew, so did GMS. You know, oh, we got thirty more families here. Let's add three more rooms. Oh, we got fifty more families in Litchfield. Let's add five more rooms. And it's just this, it it was, it it's a, it's a testament to Yankee ingu- ingenuity, um, and frugality. But because of that, it was built in response to the needs with very little intentionality to the design. And so because of that, that's where we're at. Now, again, as I said, even in FIC, can all of these be addressed? Maybe, maybe not. Are all of them insurmountable? No. Can we live with some and not all? Absolutely. This is just really just kind of a fact-based presentation on what life is like at GMS on a daily basis. So, and I know Brian added a few more slides.
Just about a little bit more on this, this is kind of extended out of FIC. So one of the things that we did and Dan and Matt jumped in at any point, um, is create this kind of, uh, needs matrix. I won't go through every single line here. But we took the needs of the building, the physical needs of the building, things that need improved on. Everything on this list in lines two through eighty-nine, there's a nice long scroll here, um, are the things identified within the, most recently, the onsite insight report of repairs that have to be done within the next twenty years to the building for it to be, to be functionable. And so that's what all these kind of lines in white are. And then we expanded upon that even some more on some things that, for example, using the counseling suite, the J suite that Dan kind of mentioned. There's nothing necessarily physically wrong with that space. The walls are standing, right? Like, the doors lock and work and stuff like that. But, so it's not gonna show up in the onsite insight report, something that needs a repair, but it is an inadequate space. So this kind of, um, looks yellowish on the bigger screen there, but it's orange on the computer screen. Are kind of the additional things that if we look at a project, that we would want to prioritize in some level, um, as part of this, like making that core kind of, kind of situation. Some things are less of a priority, right? Like, we were in FIC and we talked about prioritizing this list. I've just put the raw list here for for this purpose right now. Is the gymnasium, for example. The gym doesn't necessarily need a redesign, right? It's probably one of the lowest things on the set of orange. In a perfect world, though, like, I think the gym could use a redesign. You know, like, if if we had all the money in the world and we could do anything we wanted, I think that would be one of the things that we could look at doing. But as we prioritize, I would a hundred percent say the support suite expansion would be above the gym redesign, stuff like that. So we took the, this list, FIC did a good job with this list, we all ranked it, and we come up with kind of a, kind of our top things. And so this is gonna be when we, we're gonna get into the RFPs here, uh, next. That's the type of of things that we're gonna be giving, uh, out as part of the RFC process. Here are the priorities from the committee. We're gonna use that list to guide us as we have the conversations with the people doing the design work, because what we anticipate to this bigger project, we're gonna put this RFP out, um, and they're gonna come back with us with a set of designs. And it's gonna have a price tag attached to us. And to be frank, I would assume that price tag's gonna be too, too big, right? And then we're gonna go back, we're gonna look at our prioritized lists here. The things in white have to be done. Those are the things we're looking to 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 get done, the repair stuff. And then look at our prioritize orange list of going through them one by one and hitting those type of things, right? If they, you know, saw gym, I'm getting, using kind of the most drastic example. Gym redesign in there, that probably the first thing that we would kind of kick out, like, unless it was something that allowed a bunch of those other kind of needs to be met. In terms of just kind of looking at enrollment, because this is kind of a piece to this, uh, kind of runs contrast to talking about K kindergarten earlier. But, uh, our current enrollment literally of today is four hundred and twenty-four students in pre-K through four. If you look three years down the road, uh, and we talked about this way back in budget season, these are the same numbers we used back then. But the projected SY twenty-seven, twenty-eight enrollments of three school years down the road would be four hundred and sixty-eight students pre-K through four. There's two significant things, really one significant thing that is driving this, is an expected COVID baby bump. If you look at the birth rate in Litchfield, um, for twenty-one, like, the twenty-twenty-one, twenty-two window, particularly not next school year, but projecting out the following two school years, we'll see, we should mathematically see an increase in kindergarten enrollment because just, or babies were born in town in those years. And that's, um, kind of universal, um, everywhere, because COVID. We're talking elementary, not high school science right now.
Living in the future.
PG version, that we're expecting the COVID baby bump to arrive. Now, there are new developments in town, and just for transparency, we have seen minimal impact on our, on our enrollment from these new developments at this point. So when we, we are tracking as kids come in and out of the district, lining up with those neighborhoods that have been built and addresses that have been built. We have seen a little increase, but nothing that would drastically affect class size. But that baby bump, we could, like, we could be seeing, you know, a kindergarten class a couple of years down the road that's in the nineties compared to the kindergarten group that we have right now, which is at seventy-three, seventy-four kids right now.
Well, I mean, we're projecting for twenty-seven, twenty-eight, right? But as Dan mentioned before, every iteration of this building has been just, oh, no, we didn't plan for this. Let's add something on, right? And so you you have to start thinking smarter, like, on things. Like, we need to, we don't know, I, everyone, there's big debate over population and whether it's gonna increase or or decrease. I can't imagine that over the long haul, that we're gonna be served by this school, that population is not gonna increase. But to to sort of like put all our eggs in the basket of, well, hopefully it's not gonna increase and we're gonna, we're gonna plan for no increase in in population. And, uh, you know, we're gonna plan for no change in needs of students and stuff like that. We're, we're making the same mistake as we've made in whatever those years were that you put up there that, for some reason, I still can't remember after all this participation.
Nineteen fifty-eight, nineteen sixty-two, nineteen seventy-three, nineteen seventy-eight, nineteen eighty-three.
So, I mean, the, I guess, with the needs matrix, um, I will send out a new one, because I have one where it has prioritization by a lot of members on the FIC and the school staff, like, beyond just mine.
Yeah, I knew that. I didn't, we didn't prep them that we were gonna show that, so I stayed. I I didn't want to put anyone's priorities on the spot without them knowing, so.
Yeah, well, it's, it was collected and it's a part of the stuff. I don't remember if I have it on the drive or if it's on my computer. So there is that, the, the one thing I did want to highlight, lines two through eighty-nine, is like only the first four or five years from onsite insight report. It's not the in total twenty-year plan. So I think i- if anything, when we go forward, we highlight to whoever we talk to about, hey, this is just what they said the first five years coming up. The, yeah, I, I mean, and Matt's exactly right, is we we gotta stop doing a, you know, we, we have to stop doing something out of dramatic need and start doing intentional, intentional updates, right? And and it may not, like, this first bump may not look like, hey, we're not gonna get a whole lot, but it sets the stage for intentional redesign and revamping of the system in the school.
And just to kind of summarize, Dan touched on a lot of this, but put some numbers, um, here. And I I left out things such as the nurses and counseling.
Yes.
Classrooms is kind of what, like, I'm trying to look at here. And like the, like the numbers of classrooms, we have twenty-five classrooms, which is okay for the number of kids we have, but it's okay for that current number of four twenty-four, right? Like, if, and this is, these are projections, these are projections, right? Like, but if we added another forty kids and you spread that out over, over five grades, that's like eight kids per grade. And really, you're not gonna put eight in pre-K, you know, you're gonna put three or four in pre-K and possibly like ten kids up there. Like, spread out uneven, or you're gonna have that bubble year where you're gonna have a kindergarten with ninety-plus kids, where you could be looking at six classrooms that you need for that now cohort, as they kind of come through, at least those early grades and stuff like that. So we're at capacity now with these numbers when it turns in classroom. Now, we'll be okay next year. We, we believe we're gonna be okay next year. But as this COVID bubble kind of comes along, and if that becomes a plateau and not a spike, like, we're gonna be in serious trouble when it comes to classrooms. And, you know, Unified Arts, they have learning spaces, and I think it's wonderful that that only set really is the on a cart.
On a cart, yeah.
You say, you know, you don't have a set, no pun intended, but no set classroom for set. And, but that actually makes sense because, due to the nature of the Unified Art. And so we're fortunate that we're not having to put music and and art on wheels, you know, and utilize that class, because you don't want to do that.
Yeah, but ideally, set would have a space where, you, you, it isn't really thrive into something if it had a a maker space type environment.
Right.
And also, I I should mention too, and I, it, it's, I can't say it as a priority, but we are really bumping up against federal, um, employment law when our mailroom has a table and that's where we put our employment, um, our mandatory employment flyers up, and we call that our staff room. Like, there is, by employment law, there's supposed to be, you know, a dedicated staff space. So the mailroom has, the mailroom has a table and a poster on the wall, and that's our, you know.
I mean, using set as the example, we're gonna hire, potentially hire a teacher later on for set, you know, today. And, you know, through the interview process, she talked about how, um, she wants to utilize, um, age appropriate, but like robotics for kids is part of this, this work, right? And we think about the Lego League program we have at the elementary school and then continuing at the, at the middle school, and then eventually the, the first program at the high school. If elementary had a dedicated space for that, like, that, that frankly, that's where all this is going anyways, is that kind of robotic realm of stuff like that. We could really make those programs do awesome stuff. Like, that's, that's where education is headed. And like, we don't have that maker space type of room down at the elementary. And we do at the other buildings and look at the benefits of it, you know, like, our robotics scene, which has that space at the high school, is winning awards now. You know, like, so like, if we can do that, like, our kids will rise to it, and it will increase the, the, what we're doing educationally for everybody.
We do great things. I mean, our, our task force could be better, but they're still in a good place. We do all these things, not because of the space, but in spite of the space.
Yeah. So I just have one question on this slide, Brian.
Oh, sorry.
On that slide, it's, the title's classroom and learning space is needed, and it looks like you're showing what you currently have.
Yeah.
Is there, i- is that what you need, or is that?
I probably shouldn't have called this, yeah. I probably should have just said current and not needed. That was maybe a bad slide labeling on my behalf there, but I wanted to kind of make that comparison to where our enrollment is right now. And then what we're kind of projecting and that we're kind of like, there, again, you're dependent on what eventually kind of walks in. But you're tight in the classroom right now. Like, if, if next year, we're not obviously by our case counts, but if this bubble was coming in next year, where there's still a big group, like, that third grade group is big, right? Like, if you get two bubble groups in at the building at the same time, you're really up a creek there, right? Like, you don't have.
We can, we can handle three classes being at five.
Right, no, so.
We have a fourth go at five. Someone's going on a car. Yeah.
I completely understand. I just wanted to make sure that I was reading this right, right? Compared to the title and everything, that, that's. But yes, I, we've had this conversation of where essentially it's at capacity today.
Yeah. If you want to get rid of the portables. If, if, I mean, if you want to get rid of the portables, the, the building itself is at minimum nine classroom spaces.
Short. Yep.
And that doesn't even address any of the other, you know, functional obsolescence, intentional design.
Like, I'm gonna ask this, because I can hear Ron yelling it from his house. Does that include the thirties building?
No, that, no, that, that's not utilizing the thirties building.
You're welcome, Ron.
No, I, I, again, I'm, I'm saying, we don't use, utilize the thirties building if we want to get rid, now, I'm not saying that we can't somehow redesign to utilize the thirties building. Currently, we cannot use it. So the usable space is at minimum, at minimum, not ideally at minimum, nine learning spaces.
And help me walk through it, because people are like, there's six out there and now there's nine, right?
Yeah.
Like, because we're, we would be doing this purposely, right? Like, if we're taking the step and we're not committing to getting rid of the portables, but just using this as like the example. If you're making that commitment to get rid of the portables and to put everybody underneath the same roof.
Yes.
You're gonna take the six classes that are out there that do that. If you're doing that work, you're gonna help with, I would imagine, special ed, correct?
So six, so six of the, are the classrooms outside, uh, seventh is dividing, just adding one special ed room, so you can divide that into, um, that is seven. Eight is giving set, uh, uh, dedicated space, and nine is technically, um, either one, one of two things. One, you can utilize a speech OT combined center, or we can design a smaller classroom, but right now, again, we don't have any staff room because that's a science space. So that's, that's your ninth room. So even with that, you're kind of, you generously, you're conservatively at nine, you're re- really at ten or eleven.
So just kind of roll that into number two here. You know, um, we've talked about FIC, you know, put their recommendation forward to, to kind of continue to pursue a project here. They're dressed in these, uh, of GMS. Uh, I'm gonna say renovation to just kind of cover a really big umbrella right now, because this is not a new build, and it's not just systematically repair things one by one. So renovation can mean a lot of different things. We talked about in FIC, different, you know, additions, reconfiguring schools, all those type of things. For simplicity sake of right now, our discussion, I'm just saying renovation, covering a big umbrella. And that's gonna take us to our, our, our RFP. So Julie's been working on this. She's been pulling different sample RFPs from different. Um, she's been pulling different sample R F Ps from different recent projects kinda here around the state. Um, our attorneys are also pulling some R F Ps for us. We explained to us the our project that we're looking to do. So they're helping us with some language and some examples that would be kinda al- along those those lines. Um, I was hoping to get those today, but I I didn't have them, but I should have them by the end of the week. Um, and I apologize for that. And then just at the very, very bottom is the current draft that that Julie's kinda working on for an R F P. Very rough draft, um, and it's kinda pulling the languages here of some of these different hybrid kinda projects to kinda put in our an R F P together. I'm gonna also kinda roll into number three here, which is, which is the timeline, because we talked about last meeting. Trying to to at least get wrap our heads around like a timeline. This is in draft form, don't commit to any of these dates. But our idea here, putting these three things together is at the next board meeting, use some of these example R F Ps here. Use the the advice of our attorneys, um, the work that we're doing is to present you all an R F P that we would then hopefully after the next meeting put out. Um, to bid for people to bid on and stuff like that, agencies and stuff like that. Um, so while you're looking at those sample R F Ps, I'm gonna kinda at the same time, talk about this timeline. It's actually done in reverse, so the very first line on the timeline is voting day next year, right? Like that's. If we're gonna take this to vote, um, you know, next March, well, that's the last date, so working backwards from there, how can we get there? So this timeline kinda highlights, um, just very, very brief bullets, um, thinking both budget and this project. Estimates at this point, like using our actual dates of like what this could look like to get this to vote next year. So obviously you would need your entire budget, but specifically this warrant article with the proposal. For our deliberate session next year, these are the two potential deliberate session dates. We haven't picked one yet, but, um, let's say for argument's sake, it's the first.
Can I just real quick ask you, so with the voting day warrant article with proposal, are we talking about a a proposal for? Like an actual school?
I mean, that's what we were thinking when we put this timeline together, right? And what, and cuz I think what we discussed last time is like, is this possible? Right? And like this, what we're trying to represent this timeline is, well, these are the dates we need to start hitting, right? Like if we're going to to pull this off by next March, right?
This is great.
And we'll see if we start hitting them, right? So, um, I'll go backwards and then back up top. You gotta get it to deliberative, so everyone, uh, can see it and kinda go from there. That first meeting in January would be kinda when we have the final budget and and, uh, warrant proposals, including this proposal at a board meeting going over it with everybody, what it is. And that's kinda like a a last date. That's similar to what we did this year at one point in January, we did one last, it was later this past year, but we're hoping year two, we can do this stuff sooner. And have that kinda final meeting with everything, uh, the first weekend, the first meeting in January. I would anticipate at that point, we're having some sort of bond hearing in that December-ish range, you know, right? Not know the specific date that probably depended on attorneys and. And everything that would kinda come along with that, but if you kinda go back, um, even further here. We'd be looking at probably a school board meeting, uh, the school board meeting, second one in November. To deal with all the non-G M S warrant articles and kinda finalize them. I feel like, again, we worked through everything this fall. I knew we were we were later and I I'm gonna chalk that up to us all being new. We already have ideas, what we're going next year. We're gonna do the same pattern of stuff that we did this past year when we talk about putting stuff in reserve funds and. Uh, maybe some of the, um, position stuff that didn't pass this year, so on and so forth. We know we're gonna have an L E A con, well. Knock on wood, we'll have an L E A agreement as a warrant article, so on and so forth. Um, and then we know we have to get the proposed budget in, um, by Wednesday, October twenty-ninth. Um, so I'll be extra motivated to get it done by that day, um, but. Again, we're going backwards here. I think we need to have a proposal of work to the board. For you to approve by no later than October first, you know, that gets us an I- idea of a number, right? That we would be putting on a ballot as we're also working on our budget for next year, cuz I don't think we can do these two things independently, right? Like. I, which is the reality, if we're gonna put multimillion dollar building proposal as a warrant article. We need to not also put a high budget out there at the same time, right? Like these two things have to be in general. We might have to sacrifice a little in the short term from a budgetary standpoint and and when we're working with people and developing a budget. Because we have this larger item that that we're doing, so we need to be doing these two things kinda concurrently. So we can have a proposal for you by that October first, and again, none of these are kinda concrete yet, but we're just trying to think about. Um, what what makes sense from a timeline, there'd be another meeting in October that maybe was not by the first, it could be the fifteenth is when it is, but. That's what we gotta start shooting for is these type of dates, um, so we would kinda put that probably initial proposed project in your hands at probably the second meeting in September. We've got the year kicked off. You'd have that first meeting in September, really where a week into the school year, just continuing to get things kicked off. But now it's to get to to the to the work that is at hand here. Going back, we really need to get. An R F P out, leave that open for probably about a month at times, so we can put some stuff in front of the board, start doing the work. You know, that that meeting we have July ninth, um, like as in the summer there, school board meeting right before, like it's the summer, but it's really kicking off summer. And it allows us the summer to work with the person we select.
Discovery work.
To go back and forth to finalize a proposal, like we need to do that in the August, July, August, um, early September window. So when the school year really hits, we're now like have a real idea whether this is gonna happen six months down the road in March. And start introducing people to the ideas. At that point, hopefully have like a rough number, you know. And we're not doing this, uh, when I say we, I mean the S A U, we're not doing this in isolation of people, right? Like F I C is gonna meet over the summer, the board will meet over the summer, right? I haven't highlighted every single school board meeting here that. Um, but those would be kind of important markers if we're, our goal is to get this done in March. It's a big push, but it's possible, right? So.
Yeah, I mean, I I think the biggest thing to highlight, right, is it's gonna be constant collaboration, communication with whoever we work with. Right? To get that, to get a two-month schedule done for design, right? Essentially is what we're asking. We're asking for them to help us with all the pre-discovery to. Um, I'll say finalize and finite what those other items are for the educational needs and what that means, right? Redesigning, great, what about that design, right? So that's where we would need their help. And it and I, you guys have a lot of good ideas, but right, that R F P is gonna come down from the architect's side of what specifically needs to change. To make that happen, um, it, that needs to happen in like two months.
I've also.
Yeah.
Is that realistic?
That with that architect, one thing that's missing from the onsite insight that they haven't got, the onsite insight said that that needs to be fixed, that needs to, that's.
Right.
No one has come in and said, that's worth fixing, or, you know, like, so we need, we need a usability assessment as as part of. This work.
We know a certainty that there's certain things that they wouldn't replace in kind, right?
Right, exactly.
The one question I have though.
Until we get someone who actually has the right letters after their name to tell us that, you know.
Right.
It's not gonna be the right letters, the right tools in their truck.
Uh, the one thing I'm I'm curious about is when we talk about pro- uh, proposed budget deadline. Are we talking proposed budget as in guaranteed maximum price at that point? Cuz I will say that.
That this on the October twenty-ninth is our budget.
But so we would need a guaranteed maximum price.
I think we need to have that before we finalize the budget, right? So like I would as, hope, you know, when I say proposal approved by the school board on October first there. That's that number, I get that.
That's a, I mean.
That's fast.
It's a very fast.
Yeah.
And, you know, Heidi, you were asking this question, like, is this possible? I don't know. Like, we're gonna put this out for bid and we'll see and we might get laughed at and say there's no way.
Because, I mean, this is just not my area at all.
So i- it's gonna come down to is that whoever we work with has to have availability immediately. And they have to provide a dedicated team and then it's gonna be a full-time job for them, like right out of the gate. And then it's also gonna be on our side too, right? Whether it's, you know, Brian, you and your team and Dan, right? It's gonna become at the end of the school year. A like, you guys will probably have a second job to do it, to to get it, so that that is where my concern comes in.
I do think like in that realm, you know, selfishly, summer is the slower.
Yeah.
For us from like an educational standpoint.
Yep.
So we do need to have a lot of meetings in the months of July and August between, you know, all of us here, you know, Dan's part of that, we're a part of that, whoever else needs to be part of it.
So one of, take your place in Ireland.
One of the things that, um, you know, the the last go around, there was a lot of time spent on trying to figure out what the community wanted. And like, I mean, we've done that sort of ad nauseam now, so I think that we can.
Bypass.
We can bypass that. I mean, there was, there was talk in the F I C about doing a design build situation where, I mean, when we were talking new construction, but. Um, you know, there there's potential for very abbreviated, uh.
So there there can be, right? But I think there's just gonna be some stuff that needs to be figured out before they even get on contract.
Right.
Right? There needs to be a, and that to me is gonna be the path, right? There's still a big discussion around. Reno of some sort or work with what we've got and redistribute. And I think that path, when we go into this, just needs to be figured out.
And also, also the understanding of whoever we hire utilizes what we've already done.
Done.
We said, we didn't want to have someone come in and do another piece of.
Right, yep. Right, the the only thing, a- and this is where like and I'm speaking on the F I C behalf of what keeps coming out. The biggest thing that's holding up selecting a singular path is mapping the utilization of the three buildings. Um, I I, and this is, again, I have pushed back pretty hard on the, we have to let the education. Experts tell us what that is. We are, the F I C is not in the position to audit that, right? Cuz I'll take it from a manufacturing engineering standpoint, not from it, what is it used for, right? There's completely different needs. Um, so I I think we need to be able, I'll I'll say from the F I C, they would be looking for that. To be able to say, if we redistribute the grades throughout the district, what does that look like, right? Kyle Barker mentioned anything over seventy-five percent is utilization of a classroom is you you're at max. I, as awful as this sounds, that is the number I use for test equipment utilization. If we have a manufacturing line that goes through a piece of test equipment, if that piece of equipment is overutilized than seventy-five percent. I'm already putting a budget together to buy another one, just because of downtime, planned maintenance, replacement of cables, cleaning, et cetera, right? So I I get that concept, but again, apples, oranges. Um, but I think if we can answer that through whatever pre-work we do. I think we as a school board have a standing with, um, not only the F I C, but the budget committee. Cuz that that's one of the biggest things that Carrie is looking for is what does that utilization look like today with our current enrollment? I know Kyle Barker did something four years ago, but what does that look like today? And Brian, I know you that you wanna work with the new principal to understand what that looks like with the schedule a- and I completely agree, right? I don't, and I'm not gonna oblige by get it next week. It it's just not possible.
I mean, we, well, there's a couple of things there, like when, you know, you've reached out about, someone had reached out about, you know. What is gonna be the room usage next year at the high school, right? And I said, that's kind of irrelevant for this discussion because we're not putting any additional grades in the high school next year, so we're gonna use the building how we see fit next year. Right? Like if we wanna turn this room into a special ed classroom, we are, like if we wanna redo this, we are, because. So we're doing pieces to build a schedule because we have to build a schedule right now, so we're not gonna screw around with that. Because the reality is we're opening school next year at the high school with nine through twelve, right? Like we can't mess around. I've produced, you know, for F I C, like what a seven through twelve would look like on paper without actually like. Executing like a schedule and a build for that type of stuff, right? And I'm happy to bring that to the board and and do that presentation.
So I sent those links out in the agenda, which I just canceled the meeting for tomorrow night anyway.
And that's fine, because again, this is all, we're not putting seventh and eighth grade in the high school next year, right? Like, so, um, it's all like theoretical at this point. When in terms of, and I'm gonna use these two, uh, uh, it's important, I just wanna say like in F I C. We've been important to not define this to like just the singular option or just the singular second option. But I'm gonna explain this as an either or, and I don't mean to be, that's what the final answer is, but for simplicity's sake here, right? You're gonna look at a pre-K through four G M S, right, and a five through eight L M S and a nine through twelve. C H S, that's what we have right now. You're either gonna maintain that or you're not, right? And if you're not gonna maintain it and you're gonna start reconfiguring grades, what you're gonna look at potentially, just for argument's sake, is a pre-K through two. A three through six and a seven through twelve.
Yep.
Three, those are the three buildings, right? You're gonna maintain four grades in the middle of the schools, right? The idea is that you have capacity at the highest, at C H, at Campbell for two more grades, seventh and eighth grade, right? Leaving K through, pre-K through two, um, where where Griffin is right now. And the idea behind that is that, like, you're gonna renovate solely on the footprint at G M S there, right? And then you're gonna do renovations at C H S to accommodate the seventh and eighth grade coming up. And the question, the million-dollar question, I think everyone wants to know, is the comparison is if you just do G M S and leave it as a pre-K through four. You have this X cost for that, right? Whatever the work is associated with it. And if you reconfigure the three schools with the result being seven through twelve here, knowing you have to renovate. It is unavoidable, people, you have to renovate Campbell if you're going to do this. The S A U hallway and the hallway above it have to be renovated. There's not enough classrooms for this right now. There's physical space, but not classrooms, right? You're gonna have to Reno seven through twelve and then still Reno pre-K through two and what's the co- what's the Y cost of that?
Right.
And then you gotta think, let's say this is for argument's sake, twenty million and this is fifteen million. I have no idea what the numbers are. But argument's sake, twenty million, fifteen million, is that five million dollar difference worth disrupting now multiple schools, multiple grades? Right? Is that the long-term solution? Is that five million dollar difference worth the long-term solution? It may or may not.
Well, and not just that.
Also have to remember, you are boxing yourself in up here at seven through twelve.
Right.
You cannot get bigger, like that will be at capacity, that building.
Well, and the other piece too is you you said, you know, we're gonna disrupt a a bunch of education, but it also is changing the education model.
Changing the education.
And so, and so if we do that, there there are, there's a lot more to it than just.
Now, I will say, there are plenty of schools and I'm gonna look at the upper end first, right? There are six through twelve schools and there are seven through twelve schools, right? Like, I've visited a few of them recently. I've been at Sanborn, I've been to Hopkinton, you know, Manadnox next on the list, like. I've been to different schools that are doing these type of configurations that say very positive things about it. But each of them have said, it's very different, like that, you're going from middle school to junior high from simplicity state. And the cutoff has gotta be third coming up, because I, help me with the saying. K through two, pre-K through school two, you're learning to read, but once you hit third grade, you read to learn. So you need that different, you, that needs to be where the cut is, like if you're going to do that cut. In Hopkinton, they kept third grade with the younger kids. They say it's a nightmare, right? Like they say like this, if we could do it over. We would have stuck third up with with the fourth, fifth and sixth graders, right? So.
So ju- just my purview, if we went with that second option, it's two years of planning before we do anything in terms of.
Hundred percent.
Of construction.
And it requires a lot of teacher professional development.
Yep.
How do you instructionally change what's happening?
And and there's costs associated with that and then the way that I look at the construction, right, starting two years, you start with C H S. Because you can't do anything to G M S until you get the room at L M S. Which in order to get the room at L M S, you're starting at C H S.
And by the.
Probably at a five-year timeline before you touch G M S.
And while it's little in the big scheme of things, you need a home for the S A U.
Yeah.
Right? Like, so, eh, the, like, other districts do in this circumstance is they take the oldest school building. Which in this district would be the thirty building and renovate that into an S A U. So now we're touching another building.
Yeah, so it's another one point one million, right? At a minimum.
Now, I don't know, maybe the difference between these two things and costs, maybe instead, I use twenty and fifteen, right? You gotta talk to people. Maybe the real cost is twenty-five over here and ten, so now we're talking a fifteen million dollar difference and maybe that is worth it, right? Like, the, I don't, I don't know, right? And maybe there's advantages to doing a different educational construction or configuration. That's the things that we're working on and we're looking at, we're talking about. I don't wanna say one is better or worse or anything like that, but I want people to be. I like, I want people to understand, it's not as simple as just take these hundred and eighty kids and put them over here and it solves.
And I I just wanna add on to what Dr. Taylor was saying about the professional development aspect, you know, and for what it's worth, it also changes the way. Teachers go about their day-to-day business. Some of them are doing it for for twenty-five years. Because it it will potentially change that idea of having your own classroom. It's it's going to add traveling teachers on carts. It's gonna change the way that they've been teachers, some of them in that building for twenty-five years. So it's the professional development, it's the education, it's a lot.
It it's also cultural change.
Right, and so and so, working with all of those staff for the last three years.
Oh, yeah.
Take it for what it's worth as the outgoing guy, that's my biggest concern is, of course it can be done. But that changes the way people do their jobs.
Well, and I think what in the, what we need to connect there is why that's important, right, because there's gonna be someone that's watching, that's like, well, they'll just adapt to it. But here's the reality, they don't have to, because there's plenty of teaching jobs. And so when we, when we bring everything back to cost, we can talk about the cost of not giving adequate uh support to the kids. And then having to pay for spec- more intensive services for longer. We could talk about the cost of getting sued because you didn't deliver enough services by law. We can also talk about the cost of having to outsource teaching services or support services because you can't retain staff. And that is something that we have to consider and that that does tie into cost, it's just not a direct tie into cost.
Right, that, yes, my my ultimate concern, right, is there's kind of three avenues to this, right? You have the cost of the physical, whatever we do physically to the buildings. You have the timeline of what it takes to implement that in the educational experiences. Um, and that's for everybody, so that's for staff, right, that's also for the kids and that's also for the disruption in the training. And then you just have plain old timeline, right, is i- if, I mean. My rough guess is we're on a five-year timeline if we go with that latter option, right?
And and in the.
To touch G M S.
To touch G M S, and and why is that important, because people may say, well, you're just gonna renovate G M S as it is for that, for that purpose, but that's not the answer, right? The answer is if we do these things, we still need to make modifications, you know, fairly sizable modifications to G M S to actually achieve. Even a fraction of what we wanna achieve there, so what does that mean if it's done in five years? Well, in that five years, we may have to do repairs that don't actually tie into what we would ultimately do there. So we may be paying for repairs, right?
Some costs that we're just gonna rip out again when when we go, when we do go to touch the building. So I, I brought that up just as, at the F I C, my feeling is that's the last hangup. To get everyone collated to a common direction.
Yeah, and to be clear, like, I think the question of like, what is the cost difference between those two general ideas? Is an important one for us to answer, like I would, like if I was just a random person, like I'm an educator, like, I'm gonna be biased towards education, right, like. But if I was a random taxpayer, I would wanna make sure that the district, the board looked at every single option, right? And this is an option we do really need to look at, like the reconfiguration, because if it is a radical difference in price, right? Like, we owe it to everyone then to really examine that option, whether it's the right fit for the town and the district, right? If that's a fifteen, twenty million dollar difference in price tag, there's a lot of actual other educational things you can do with that money. That might be better spent, right?
But I, like. I agree, that's super important, I also agree that that is, without that, it's gonna be hard to get a super majority vote on anything. For for a bond, I do think that that does blow this timeline up though.
Potentially, right, and I think that's why we just gotta take it one step at a time.
Right.
So let's say we put this, well, we are, regardless of anything, we're gonna put this out to bid, you know, in the next month timeframe, right? And, you know, we have these parameters to look at this, and let's say we get back and we start meeting with people over the summer here, right? And like their initial stuff back to us is like, look, these these two things are gonna cost the same, right? Or in fact, the renovating the high school actually might cost you more, like that is definitely a possibility, right? And if that's the case, and we can say confidently back to an F I C, to the public, to everyone, look. Like, we gain nothing financially by completely reinventing our educational like structures here. Let's now focus on this option over here, right, and we just don't know the answer to that question. Um, and that's why we need to start taking these steps.
My question is, who has to answer that utilization cost question? That it would be an acceptable answer, that it would be given weight, because I feel like if. You came in and said, this is what I think, or or depend, maybe, I don't wanna name names, but other architects we've had in the past. That comes in, that might not be as trusted as.
Right, so.
Who, from your opinions of being on F I C, who needs to be the one to come in and answer that question?
Part of where the where the breakdown was, which I, which I was gonna actually bring up, because I think that this goes into the R F P, we need to have a meeting.
Pause you for one second, Danny, you're good to go if you wanted me, I just kinda looked at the clock there and I'm like, keep, you can go on.
Yep.
Um, go.
Have a good night.
So. What what I was gonna say is, uh, you know, the thing that was brought back to us was that. The R F P is so critically important because that drives what's being delivered.
Right.
And so I think that part of the problem was, um, what Kyle Barker has kinda given us feedback on was. I was given these parameters, so like everything that I looked at was through the lens of those parameters.
Right.
And so, for example, you know, Kyle's, when he looked at the high school, it was, well, you have to have a completely separate entrance. You have to have completely se- uh, an extra gym, an extra cafeteria.
You don't need that stuff.
You don't necessarily need that stuff, but through the lens that he was given to look at it in, that was what was required. So I think we, I think what this all comes down to is is this R F P that we put together. Has to be spot-on for what we're actually looking for. And it has to meet what we think the community is looking for, so like, for example, we're not gonna say, hey, we want solar panels. Because we all know that that's a ridiculous headache that we've dealt with, right, so.
So the the, and I think Matt is right, right, it comes down to the communication, right? Is, and that's why I'm saying like this isn't a, here's your R F P, I expect a price in two months. Cuz I've seen those projects go really, really wrong in my business. Um, so that, but I think it starts that. The way I put this to the F I C, and I know Brian has said it too at the F I C, is. That decision on the utilization is a part of the R F P, right? That for me comes to, we put it out there to say, we also want you to look at this. You as the experts with the educational staff, come back to us and say, here's our professional opinion. Because you hired to give me you a a professional opinion. And we have stated to the F I C that we also have to take that at their word. We have to take it at that value of, we hired an expert to tell us the best solution.
Um, and there's gonna have, like, I'm sorry, everyone, you're gonna have to trust us the district a little bit.
Piece too that we have to remember that we're not up against right now is, we have a different administration, and so.
No, I know, and and again, I'm I'm hopeful for that, and I've been pleasantly surprised watching the F I C meetings. Um, how well those have gone, how we just went through the budget process and that, you know, was a better process, well, maybe I, maybe not have gotten the result we wanted. On everything, um, I I feel like it's an improved process. I I guess I just am nervous that we'll get to the point where we have an answer and it's like, yeah, but you didn't think of this, and so we should have asked this.
And that's why, that's why we do have to address this consolidation thing, right, like we, as an F I C, we've really, I mean, look, we. I think we defended, no one was questioning whether we should ship out our high school kids to another district, right? Like that was something that people, the last round were saying, well, you didn't really actually look at that, right? But the F I C, which is a bunch of community members, all unanimously, I think, maybe all.
I think people took it off the table, right, like, and that was the part of the process, right, like you, like the F I C is supposed to be people from the community. At part of this committee, right, representing different viewpoints, which I think is certainly true of that group of people, right, there are people, kids, young kids, older kids. Kids that have grown up, no kids, like everything, right? And are are like, we can't have twen- twenty, you can't imagine every single educational option there is on the sun. We do have to think of some, we gotta prioritize some, so we talked about, you know, sent, you sent a survey out, right, and included sending the kids to a different high school, right? There wasn't a ton, whatever, you didn't get enough results, you did, whatever, people had different thoughts about that. You can't dispute that not many people were that enthusiastic about it, of the people that responded, right, like so. And if you wanna price tag on how much tuition's gonna cost you to send kids to a school, we can come up with that, like in that, and that's before.
As an example, though, I mean, I don't think we have to revisit that.
Like, you're looking at one school.
So I think, I think where we're at though is, right, like we've done, we've done the new school thing, right, we've we've put that out there now. We know that if we were to throw that out there again, we could probably do it for a lot less, but at the very least, we know, we've gotten the feedback on that. Now, we're going to get the feedback on a renovation in some form, and we're gonna look at the redistribution option. So really, the only other thing that we've taken, I think confidently taken off the table is doing repairs only. And, you know, the, while there are still a few people who are saying, well, no, that's that's the option, right, like, cuz they're they're looking at it solely based on cost. We, I think the majority of the F I C felt like the survey was definitive enough that everyone, there there's the lion's share of people care about. Education to some extent, some of them, you know, a good portion of them also care about cost, reasonably so, but, um, you know, so I think we're at a place where we we. Can get sixty-six or whatever it is percent of the community behind something with the information that we have, cuz we'll have.
And that's been the point of the committee, right, like I, we're not, the committee, not the individuals. The committee is trying to come up with the best solution, right?
Right.
Like, there may be, there are certainly people on that c- on that committee who think like a repairs-only option is. There are certainly people on that committee who think it still needs to be a new build, right, like, but the committee has to compromise. And what is an option that we think can get in front of the voters that can be supported, right? And that may be sacrificing, well, I really think that a new build is the option, like, you know, random person, but like. I know that something has to get done, so I can live in compromise with a renovation, right?
I think that the committee is a good cross-section of what our larger community.
Sure.
Looks like, and I think that you just made a great point, right, like, there are people on that committee who have strong opposing opinions of that. But have come together on, okay, well, if we're gonna meet in the middle, so hopefully what we're putting out is the meat in the middle for the community at large.
And I think we continue to come down to it, right, like we think of brand new build, just repair, right, like we kinda took those away. It is natural to start coming, and again, I'm using renovation as a giant, giant umbrella here.
Umbrella, right.
Of like, what does that renovation now look like, right, like renovation addition, just a renovation, reconfiguration, now we're coming down slowly and smaller.
So I guess all I wanted to make sure of is, whatever that R F P is, we answer that second option, right? We have three buildings, K through four, five through eight, seven, nine through twelve, right? And then the K through two, three through six, seven through twelve. If we can bring that to the F I C, I think that will uh gain us favors. In terms with accurate information, but like you said, right, a difference of five million dollars, call it twenty percent. You know, I'll take a twenty percent cost adder if it means that we're set for the next forty years. Versus, part of my fear is, we do the redistribution and I just took available capacity at the high school. And gave it to the elementary, we get the COVID bump and all of a sudden now the high school, like, we gotta go add to the high school, right? So we created a seven-year solution, not the forty-year solution, so.
So to bring it.
So, yeah, circling us back.
To bring it back, I think that, um, looking at this, so I guess first and foremost, this timeline is. If we were to achieve this, this is what it would look like, we are not, by no means saying that we are gonna just jam a solution to try to hit this. So that's point, I think part number one that we have to just be clear of.
This is kinda like backwards in a way, like, okay, this is the goal.
I think the other piece about this, looking at this, you know, fine with all the other dates, but I think that if May twenty-first is our next meeting. I don't think that we're gonna be able to approve an R F P, I think that we as a board need to have actual like, like work session time. To to dedicate to talking through, because I think that is the most critical thing that we're gonna do moving forward is is.
And we do need F I C buy-in, right, and you know, we did have to, this is the reality, and this is where this is gonna be really hard. Like, we're up against now May and June of the school year, right, like we're postponed, because we weren't gonna have quorum. We had to postpone F I C meeting tomorrow night, so we're not gonna have that one, right? We weren't gonna have a quorum for the one over April vacation, so we didn't end up having that one, I think that's when the previous one was.
Yep.
So, you know, we're gonna, like, I emailed you, like, hey, I can't make that side of meeting on June twelfth when graduation is going on, right?
But we're invited to as well, right?
So like, that's gonna be a date, so I I say that because we might have to schedule a, you know, a different board meeting in an off-board meeting week. To like talk about this, right, and to get this going, or like do some of those things. And I think it's important to get that F I C buy-in with like this R R F P.
I agree, I I I think, and again, I'm not volunteering you guys, but I mean, I think.
I'm not on the F I C, so I don't know.
No, I know, but I'm looking at you because you have history with projects, and I'm looking at you, you know, I, you know, I would love to see. If you guys can wrap your arms around a draft for the board. I don't have the knowledge, I don't have the F I C, so I mean, my input is.
My point is just, I think we we, you know, it needs to be presented, I think like the initial draft, like, yes, that's fine. But like, I do think it needs to be an actual discussion amongst the full board, saying, okay, we're reading through this right now. This is why we've put these things in here, do we all agree that these are the priorities? Because that was the problem last time, was the priorities apparently were not a good reflection of the whole board or the community at large.
So, yes, I will also say that, um, and we've always prefaced this. That we will present what we are thinking as an R F P to the F I C, and they can give us their comments. But in no way is it gonna, like, we're not gonna rip out the the draft R F P.
Yeah.
And go from there, so.
And as I've said at F I C, we're gonna work with our attorneys, right, and come full circle with that, right? Like, we have these sample, the, a lot of the sample R F Ps you see here are the most recent building projects in in the state, right? Like that, from the firms we're gonna be putting this out to, this is the work they they they've responded to, right? And when we talk to the attorneys and been like, help us with this R F P, and like, I think maybe. A little bit of the delay of them getting back to us is we're asking for a really unique thing here, right, like it's kind of like.
Right.
I won't say a two-for-one here, but kind of, but two-for-one is what we're asking for here.
Yeah.
Um, so there's not like a set template for that, so we gotta be, like, to get, yeah, get back to the point, it's like. Very purposeful in the language in the R F Ps and to ensure we get what we want with it, so.
Well, and we have to also remember that there's not a huge pool of people that are going to be responding to this, right? So we also have to try to make it something that they're gonna be like, I guess I'll.
And you had mentioned that earlier, right, like that.
Yeah, we had put out the R F P for the the software repair.
And we didn't get anything back for that, and that we're probably gonna have to actively. Yeah, solicit people to to bid for this, right, not just put it out there and hands off, so.
Well, and, yeah.
Send it to each place with like a fruit basket or something.
So is this something that you guys can, I guess, can put in and get? So the goal is if we need another work session, we should get that on.
The calendar.
The calendar.
Yeah, I mean, we could try for the, um, you know, we'll go up, meeting the twenty-first, we could try for the week after that if we're thinking, nah, I don't know.
I am, I mean, I will say unless I am on emergency work travel like I have been, um, I should be.
It doesn't have to be a Wednesday per se, right, like.
Right, so that.
I I guess my question is, are we at the mercy of this room?
Oh, always. Yeah, we can be meeting in the parking lot.
I'm wondering if it's two, it doesn't have to be the full board necessarily, it's the most educated that take a stab at a draft. And then at the board meeting on the twenty-first is when we dissect it and really put it in final form.
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
And and we do have a draft, like I.
No, I know.
Have it here, I I.
It didn't go live.
No, we have samples and then we have the the formal, formal R F P, but the the crux of the language that the F I C was trying to get to. Like, in their recommendation, they had kind of like language attached to it, it's not R F P language.
No, it's not.
The language that they kinda wanted.
Which is what we worked hard on to say, you guys, like, we're not drafting the R F P in the F I C. We are drafting a recommendation in the school board to go pursue and write an R F P.
Could we do, I, could we do, like, have them send it out to us via email and solicit comments back to the email? And then be able to.
As long as it's public.
Well, we could, yeah, we could, it'd be part of the public minutes.
I mean, I.
The other thing you could do is you have two committee members that are part of the F I C, or two board members that are part of the F I C, right?
Right.
Um, Dan and Peter, like, we can just, so it's not a quorum, we can just work with Dan and Peter and like go back and forth, like, and follow the committee that we have.
Right.
Like we do in policy, right, like, we're workshop and policy, it's the the board members on policy committee.
Right.
And then that way, there's a greater likelihood on May twenty-first that we're able to approve it without.
Great, and with people on F I C, there's a greater chance that you guys have an understanding of what F I C is looking for. If we're looking for, not necessarily approval, but we're looking for input.
Right.
That representation is there.
So, so we can definitely do that, and what I'll do is, I, at the next F I C meeting, which is the twentieth, so the day before the school board meeting. Is that I will, basically, I will act as secretary and make comments live on the draft R F P that. That that's fine, I I'll figure it out for that one, otherwise, I will keep sending you Word documents. But beyond that, it's gonna be one of those things of in in between time, right? If, you know, I know you sent out the link to the current R F P, as long as like we can start making comments on it ourselves.
Yeah.
So that was livened up sometime this afternoon, that link.
Yeah, yeah.
My my agenda that I printed out at two thirty doesn't have it as a live link.
Yeah.
Yep.
So that's. So eh, I think there is a path. Yes. I, I think there is a path, and I think there's a path with the FIC, I'll just change around the schedule a little bit and basically dedicate the entire next meeting to the draft RFP versus looking at the governance, the proposed governance. Um, and go from there. So I, I think we can get there.
So does that mean we could skip FIC governing articles next?
Well, I was gonna do a very brief update anyways, that, that's the one that we, that was part of this last time. We've gotten some feedback from the FIC. I haven't updated this specific document yet, the Google Doc, there's a Word Doc.
Perfect, so there's nothing for us to look at.
So there's nothing more to look at. That one, so.
I was gonna say, in general, all the comments have been generic in nature, it's the length of the terms and when.
I know, I missed, I, I, I actually missed something, and I think it was Denise or Ron, one of them pointed it out, and I was like, oh, that's just my mistake.
Yeah.
Put the wrong thing in for a term like.
So there, there's just also others, comments in there that, you know, we, we'll have to work through with the FIC. And then it comes to the school board, and the school board will, you know, either accept or reject them.
All right, so going back to the agenda, GMS project, we have, you know, marching orders going forward. We have a plan in terms of what's gonna happen. And then the board itself will see a full outline either before or at least linked to the agenda that we get over the weekend, so we have time.
I mean, I think ideally, if it was before, we could reply with comments to try to get a li- higher likelihood of, of being able to just approve it on the twenty-first.
Again, I'm, I'm cognizant of the time of year and I'm cognizant, you know, there are other things happening. So I, you know, if we, the very least have it by that draft agenda, we can make our comments and, and have a good productive conversation and get it in final form, um, for the twenty-first.
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay. Policy updates, uh, is there anything else on GMS project? All right, policy updates, we have none. I did talk to Renee about setting up a schedule for us. We've, you know, have been busy, um, but we'll get there. Old business, we just talked about FIC operations and discussions, so you gave us that update.
I have one other thing, there's a second there, it just goes on to the next page.
Yep.
I wanna formally ask the board, is it okay if we hire, have.
You want a motion on it?
Yes.
I will make a motion to approve a formal, uh, minute taker for the FIC.
Second.
Third.
Any other discussion? It will be Jan, it'll be Jan?
Be Jan, yes. She's willing to do it too.
Be Jan.
Jan's great. Okay, do we have a cost associated with it?
Um, I do, I do, I do, yeah, I have it back in my office. We did talk about it, it is very, very reasonable. Sorry, I don't remember, I can bring it next time, but.
Nope, I just didn't know if you needed a dollar amount, or you just want just approval.
Just approval, and then we will take care of it.
Slow motion, second and a third.
Similar to the cost it would be for a board meeting, so.
Got it. Okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Oh, no, roll call.
You'll get it by the end.
It's gone now.
He's gone.
Oh.
So now we are, all those in favor.
You don't have to continue with it? Why don't you just continue with the roll call just in case? Who's gonna challenge it?
You are, you're gonna challenge it. Okay, Matt.
Aye.
Dan.
Aye.
I am an aye. Three, zero, zero.
Look at the rules to see if that's like legit, if you could change the meeting.
Okay, um, school board comments.
Uh, I think, uh, if I'm not mistaken, thank you to my wife, uh, it is teacher appreciation week and nurse appreciation week.
We're getting there.
Close.
It is GMS teacher appreciation week.
Well, I think, isn't it, isn't that a national thing?
Yeah, it's national, but we're doing the other schools.
It is, but they always puts it right after April vacation. So, let's do it differently.
I did the same thing, I got corrected yesterday, so.
I mean, listen, I'm just observing national holidays, so.
Yep. So we appreciate you.
We have school nurses and.
Yeah, today's National School Nurse Day.
Yes. Oh, is it, is it National School Nurse Day? Like, it's all, it's all nurse day, I think, yeah.
Awesome. Yes, we have best of the best. Any other school board?
We do, and also, eh, I know school board comments, but also, the wonderful staff, but also thank you to the PTOs who are doing, uh, wonderful work, um, supporting our teachers as well and celebrating them this week, our staff.
Any other school board comments?
Nope.
Hearing none, manifest, I believe it's all set.
All signed.
Signatures, no other questions. I'm gonna read through the manifest summary. Uh, manifest seven-four-nine, payroll, J Y Stipin for seventh block first semester was three hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars and seventy-eight cents. Uh, the pay seventy-four-nine E F T, which was voluntarily four oh three B deductions, was nine thousand, one hundred and seven dollars and ten cents. Twenty-five dash twenty-three GL vendors accounts payable to first student, uh, was a hundred, there's two numbers here. So there's the first student says a hundred and seventeen thousand, one hundred and twenty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. And then the amount total is three hundred and twenty-two thousand, fifty-four dollars and twenty-one cents. Uh, there was another accounts payable, twenty-five dash twenty-three GL E F T for seven thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars and five cents. Uh, there was our credit card manifest, which is manifest number twenty-five BMO dash eleven for twenty-one thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents. Uh, there was our accounts payable manifest, um, it was a small manifest that if it was, um, we waited, um, we could get a late fee for that. Um, that is manifest twenty-five dash twenty-four GL vendors for twelve thousand, fifty-one dollars and forty-three cents. And then there was another accounts payable, um, manifest for Amazon to keep our credit line open. Manifest number twenty-five dash twenty-four GL E F T for six hundred and eighty-eight dollars and two cents. The grand total of all of those manifests added up is seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and ninety dollars and fifty cents. And again, this was from our April sixteenth meeting. Moving on and opening it up for our last community input, is there anyone from the community that would like to provide us input? Seeing none, we will close community input for the night, and, um, I will entertain a motion to move it to non-public session. The motion, I will second it. Um, this will be for, it needs to be a roll call vote. Uh, the dismissal, promotion or compensation of any public employee, or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him, unless the employee affected one has a right to a meeting and two, request the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. C, matters that if discussed in public would adversely affect the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless such persons request an open meeting, and then there are additional ones. For tonight's purposes, I believe we're going in under all three, um, A, B and C for non-public.
Ooh.
Um.
Surprises.
And with that, we have a motion, second roll call vote, Matt.
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
And I am an aye. Uh, thank you very much for watching this meeting, for anyone who watches it, our next meeting will be May twenty-first. Um, I hope everyone.